And good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting for August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. We thank everybody for, uh, thank everyone for being here. Glad that y'all were able to make it through that rain and that water. Some people had to swim to get here.
Rain and water?
Yeah, rain and water. Different thing is rain than there's water. Uh, I'm gonna call on, call on Commissioner Larry Lancaster for our invocation, please.
Father, before we begin this evening, we pause to give you thanks. You are the source of life, love, hope, and peace, and we thank you for this new day. We recognize your care for all of us, especially we, your servants and residents, who join in loving this county of Cumberland that we call home. May we fulfill our important role in making our county a better home for all of us. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
That will take us to our public comment period, and I will call on the county manager, Ms. Cannon, to read the public comment policy.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. So the public comment period is an opportu-
I don't think you might. Can you get?
The public comment period is an opportunity for citizens to share their thoughts and concerns with the Board of Commissioners. Each speaker will be given a maximum this evening of two minutes. We have eight speakers, and our rules require a fifteen-minute time limit. No time may be yielded to a speaker by another speaker. When speakers come to the lectern, we ask them to state their name and give their address. The public comment period, however, is not an opportunity to expect any impromptu responses by the Board of Commissioners. They're here this evening to hear and listen to the concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And that is sixteen minutes. It's two fifty seconds, just to let you know that. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are eight speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Savannah Akins.
All right.
Our second speaker is Barbara Black.
Ms. Barbara.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and fellow citizens.
Good afternoon.
My name is Barbara Black. I'm a resident of Fayetteville, North Carolina. I resided on Morganton Road here in Cumberland County in Fayetteville. I'm here to advocate for funds for the opioid settlement funds for Marover Reese Fellowship Homes, okay? And most of you know them, I hope. How many of you know Marover Reese, familiar with them? Okay, um, our mission is to provide a safe and supportive environment for those seeking recovery from alcohol and other drugs based on a twelve-step program. We have been accomplishing this since nineteen sixty-one, when Pat Reese and Jimmy Marover envisioned a safe and healthy place for alcoholics and addicts to focus on recovery in order to become healthy and productive members of society. Funding from the opioid settlement fund for Marover Reese Fellowship Homes would be utilized for, we are a six-month program, but only receive thirty days of funding for Alliance for only six beds. That leaves four beds unfunded by Alliance. In the past, sixteen beds were funded by Cumberland County Mental Health Center for six months, with the possibility of extensions of thirty days and doing those extensions up to a year. Again, and then Alliance, the funding decreased to only thirty days. Again, we are a six-month program, therefore, we are not being paid for five months for each resident. Please let that sink in. That, that's huge. That's a huge deficit for this organization. We have thirty-eight beds ready to be occupied, but because of not being funded, they remain empty. Note, most of our residents are diagnosed with opioid substance disorder, often comorbid with other disorders. We are asking-
I'll let you finish that sentence.
Yeah, okay. We are asking for ten residents, uh, ten beds for six months at a hundred dollars per day as a minimum. These funds will be used for opiate-related recovery efforts, as well as for housing, clothing, and food, and other associated costs essential for recovery.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I leave this with you so that you all can review it later?
If you give it to the clerk.
Yes, and I have some business cards in case you all have any follow-up questions. We would appreciate you going ahead and doing that, and we'll take care of it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Barbara. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Lamar Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Lamar Williams. I live at four-two-three Poplar Hill Road in Fayetteville, North Carolina. That is east of the river. I have come to you tonight to talk to you about water and rain, and the fact that the water in our area is contaminated now. Um, I didn't know a whole lot about water, because I grew up in town. I got married, moved out to the country, and I found out that water is quite valuable for those of us who own a well. The intersection of ninety-five and twenty-four was family property for my wife. When those two roads were constructed, the creek and the lake that her mother used to fish in dried up. We've been since that time, got a letter from Kinetics and some other people wanting to test our well. Uh, I didn't think much about it. We're twenty miles north of that point in DuPont, but we have contaminated water. When I leave my house and come to the end of the road, it's Rock Hill. I look to my left, and Hummingbird is there, and there's a fire hydrant. I go to my right, cross twenty-four, there's a fire hydrant in Fander, but we don't have public water. I ask you of two things to consider. Don't leave pockets of non-public water in the communities east of the river, and then give, give some thought to, um, what Kimoris is doing for a whole-house filtration system. We went in and put in extra faucets and the little purification kits for our-
I'll let you finish that sentence. Go ahead.
For our, um, house. It is gonna impact the value of our house. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Dixon Sophie.
My name is Dixon Sophie. I am the, um, current board chair for Marover Reese Fellowship Homes. Just wanted to follow up on Barbara's comments. So, so Marover Reese has been in Cumberland County since nineteen sixty-one. It started out one men's house. It is now ten acres of property with two men's house and one women's house. We're in the process of building a couple other transitional houses on that property. We also have a fellowship home where members of the community come in from the twelve-step community. As mentioned, our funding has been cut from when Cumberland County Health funded us for sixteen beds for up to a year for residents, but now, as we've transitioned to Alliance, has gone down to six beds for thirty days. We have thirty-eight beds available. We've only survived through funding from the VA, who funds eighteen beds for six months. My understanding is that, so seventy-five percent of our residents right now are suffering from, from opioid addiction. So, um, my understanding is that one of the points recommended by Dr. Green to the Commissioners is to explore options to build or lease space for residential substance-use facility, a recovery community center, and transitional housing. So I would just point out that rather than the county spending funds to, to build these facilities, that you just keep in mind that we've got these facilities available. We're the only residential inpatient facility in Cumberland County. We have thirty-eight beds available. We have all of the facilities that, that you're looking for in that recommendation, and we would just ask for your consideration and partnering with us rather than spending money to build facilities, that you would use those funds for the funding of the operations of, of the facilities. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Waters.
Hello, I'm Mike Waters. You all know me pretty well. Grace Creek, resident, united against PFAS in our waters and wells. Six-nine-seven-five, Point East Drive is where I live, right across from the Kimoris Plant. As you all know, uh, the EPA came out with a ten-point per trillion for dimers acid for Gen X in drinking water. Kimoris is challenging that, so they are actually suing the EPA to try to raise it back up to the one-forty limit. Luckily, there's seven water groups and five individuals that are signing on for an intervention in that lawsuit, Kimoris against the EPA. Deborah Stewart, myself, are luckily two of those members, three additional people out of, um, the Wilmington-based area, and then the majority of the water groups are out of there. So we're gonna fight for the individual, like he just pointed out, you know, he, he now knows he's contaminated. Twenty miles is not far. It reached thirty-six miles from air disposition in West Virginia, in the Ohio Basin. So, you know, we're gonna fight for you. We're gonna try to do all we can to assist you in getting it and keeping it at the ten parts per trillion, because that will be instrumental. We need you to keep pressuring on DEQ. DEQ should be enforcing the North Carolina groundwater standards and pushing on Kimoris to fund paying for this water. It shouldn't be the county. I know you guys are going after grants. I appreciate all you're doing, and I need to apologize to Mr. Keith. Did not know, there was no O there. I do know that now. But we appreciate everything you're doing. We're gonna keep fighting for the community. We've got T-shirts now, and it's not just, you know, Grace Creek. We are fighting for everybody, both sides of the river and eight counties now. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Waters.
Our next speaker is Ms. Jamie White.
Ms. White, camera, I don't know.
Hi, I'm Jamie White. I live in the Grace Creek community at nine-nine-eight Pan Drive. Our well was tested in both twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen by DEQ and Kimoris. It is contaminated at six-twenty-five parts per trillion for combined PFAS and Gen X. So we've qualified since twenty, twenty-eighteen for the GAC. We don't have one. They are still delivering me bottled water, and I'm sorry, for right now, we have a family of five that lives on that ground. Thirty gallons of water every two weeks is not enough water. I make two trips to the plant every day. I need your help. I have been to the senators, I have been to DEQ, I have been to our attorneys. Kimoris is stalling because you guys are stalling. You guys want us to have public water, that's fine, and I totally understand that that is a solution, but that's five years down the line. I've already waited four years for a GAC. My great-grandson was just born three months ago with a cleft lip. His nasal cavity and lip will be repaired on Thursday. The chemicals are known to cause those issues. My children were raised in this water. We bathe in it, we wash our clothes, we wash our dishes. I cook with only bottled water. In my garden, I tried this year to water with just bottled water at forty-five dollars a day. It didn't grow. It didn't grow. I couldn't water it enough, but I couldn't conceive myself putting poisoned water on the vegetables that I have to feed my family. I need your help to pressure DEQ to get us the GAC. We qualified four years ago. It's not, I didn't poison the well myself. This was not me, by no means. But they have to do something besides thirty gallons of, of bottled water, because it is not enough. I make two trips a week to the plant to get more water, because we have to cook and we have to drink it. When you pull into the plant, I don't know if you've been there, but if you, when you pull into the plant, there's a big sign where you have to go check in with this little piece of paper that they give you, and on that sign, it says, "We are living chemistry", and we're their test dummies.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Deborah Stewart.
My name is Deborah Stewart. I reside at twenty-four ninety-four Factory Lane. That's one of the residents I have. I have two that are right next door to each other, but that's the one that has the Gen X in it. That's the only one that Kimoris and the consent order seem to be concerned about, even though I have PFOS and another PFAS in my other well. We do need home, whole-home solution. The GAC and the RO are fine. The GAC, as Mike will tell you, filters out almost a hundred percent of the PFAS. Well, if you have a garden, or if you have livestock, it's gonna burn out the, um, the pump for your well, which Mike can attest to. So we need another solution other than GAC and RO. We do need water ran out to us, so we can continue our life as we have chosen, to raise farm animals, to raise a garden, to live out in the country. Uh, that's the reason I moved out there over forty years ago, was to have horses and be able to do as I please on my property. I can no longer do all that. I have the horses, but they're being poisoned. I have one horse that was tested in the animal studies, and she's well over fourteen-hundred parts per trillion for PFOS. That's the C-8. That's the one that contaminated Parkersburg, West Virginia. And, uh, so, and I have a dog that is also positive for four different PFASs at four-eighty parts per trillion. Our blood work is well into the tens of thousands, we, those of us that participated in the human studies, and we're currently waiting for our second set of blood work to be posted to us. But we do, we need, we need help. Many of us are self-suffering from health effects from this water, and, uh, thank you.
You can finish your sentence.
I was just gonna say, I beg you for your help. You know, I, because of the economic times that we're suffering, I really feel the need to have a garden, raise my own meat, and, uh-
Yes, ma'am.
Now I'm feeding everything bottled water.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Mr. Chaleko Hurst.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I've come to address, my whole PowerPoint today is to address justice week, really should be justice month. Justice should be twelve months out of the year. We have individuals who have mental health issues. The latest case over, dealing with overzealous law enforcement was Ms. Johnson. She was twenty-three years old, murdered by law enforcement. The county just had, I don't know if it was the county or the city, with the McNeil case in Spring Lake, when this young lady, she was twenty-two years old, and she was held at the detention center downtown with bullet fragments in her head, because the sheriff department, in its right, refused to let her go back to Chapel Hill for treatment. To this day, she still has bullet fragments in her hair. We had military wives this past week go before the city council and testify that they are afraid to call law enforcement when their husbands are having mental, mental health issues, because they may be murdered or assaulted. The city hired an individual about a year and a half ago to address mental health incidents with citizens. Whether it's just one or two, it's in the budget, they need to have two permanent individuals to address mental health with citizens, not just the military, but regular citizens, and two alternates. That's what I'm asking you to do. Too many citizens are ending up dead or assaulted by overzealous individuals. They just seek justice. Also, lastly, North Carolina is one of the only states in this country that still has the black literacy test. It don't say Asian, it don't say Spanish, but they have yet to put it on the ballot. They're trying to put it on in November. Please address the mental health issues, not just for the military, but our private citizens also. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
There are no further speakers.
All right. Uh, thank you all so very much for the public comment. We would take those under consideration. Thank you so very much. Uh, that will take us to the approval of the agenda. Madam Manager, I was informed by Mr. Van Gheens that on the, um, closed session, that we do not need item A, which is the economic development matter, that's gonna be deferred to a later date.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any other changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Then I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda. So move. It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. That will take us to presentations. And I would ask that Commissioner Evans would meet me at the podium. And it is my honor to stand here with Commissioner Evans, who is our past chairperson of this board, uh, and I served as his vice chair. Thank you so very much for allowing me to have that opportunity. And, uh, I would tell you, this weekend, we were at our state convention for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and within that is a sub-organization, uh, which is the North Carolina Association of Black County Officials. And at that, um, meeting, Commissioner Evans was recognized. He was given the highest award that they have, which is the Frederick Douglass Award, and in that, they talked about his commitment, uh, to the citizens of not just Cumberland County, but to the state of North Carolina. We know his advocacy for the reentry program and for, uh, all of those that are, uh, need help in this community and throughout the state. First, he led it on the county level, and then he took it to the state level with the North Carolina Association of Black County Officials. So I'm gonna read the plaque. It says, "North Carolina Association of Black County Officials, the Frederick Douglass Award, presented to Commissioner Charles Evans in recognition of outstanding and dedicated service as a county commissioner in North Carolina, presented by Michael Cogdell, the president, Skip Austin, the chairman of the awards committee, August twelfth, twenty-twenty-two." I will tell you, I was there, and I was proud to see that Cumberland County does stand hand and shoulders above a lot of, uh, other counties in this particular state. There were a number of commissioners that were up for this award, uh, but they chose our commissioner, Commissioner Charles Evans. Let's get my picture, then you can call. There you go.
First of all, I would like to say thank you to the board, I currently serve on the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, um, for helping me to understand more about service. Service is something that, when you're elected, is what the citizens, the constituency would want you to do. And so any board, Cumberland County Board of Commissioners and the North Carolina Black Association of County Commissioners, any board that's dealing with service, I'm very pleased and honored to be a part of, and thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to serve each and every one of you in a capacity to make things better for everyone across the board. Thank you so much.
That will take us to our next present, uh, presentation, and it is my honor to have our Fort Bragg Garrison Commander, who just got here to Cumberland County, and we want to give him a warm welcome. And I'm gonna call on the manager to introduce him and give us a little bit of his background, and, uh, thank him so very much for coming and for being here, uh, even through his trials today in terms of, uh, what he had to go through. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colonel John Wilcox assumed the Garrison Command at Fort Bragg on June of twenty-twenty-two. He graduated from the Virginia Military Institute-
Madam Manager, can you just pull, I, I, something's, uh, yeah.
I normally don't have this problem.
I know, but, uh, this is, there you go.
Yes, sir. Thank you. He graduated from the Virginia Military Institute and earned his commission in the Military Police Corps in nineteen ninety-nine. Colonel Wilcox volunteered to join the Special Operations Civil Affairs in two thousand and seven. His most recent assignment was as Deputy Chief of Staff for U.S. Army Special Operations in twenty-twenty-one. He holds master, masters degrees from the Naval Postgraduate School and the Army War College. And we're, again, Mr. Chairman, very pleased to have him, and I'd ask him to come to the lectern and share a few thoughts with us.
Thank you, Colonel Wilcox. We'd ask you to come and, and join with us today. You got more than two minutes.
I'm trying to keep my, my comments brief, sir. Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, and friends and guests, thank you very much for this time to come address the Board of Governors, and I'm truly honored to be here tonight. We'd like to take a moment to thank you all for your support, for our men and women who serve daily, uh, either here in our, within our, uh, combined, or within the United States or overseas, as they are right now. Our men and women at Fort Bragg who answer the call every single day to serve this great nation, and most of our service members, either DOD, civilians, contractors, or civilian employees who support the day-to-day operations, our installation live right here in this city, and are proud members of the Fayetteville and Cumberland County. There's a unique bond between our military and our civilian communities. We are your neighbors, your classmates, uh, we are your friends. Our children play together, go to school together, go to the same church together, play on the same ball team. We sing the National Anthem together on the Fourth of July. We are a community who takes great pride in being part of Cumberland County and Fayetteville. We are a community who are in the thousands, men and women, civilians, family members, and then the army. Our greatest asset is our people. Our volunteer army is a credit to Americans of all races, genders, creeds, and our common commitment to the defense and love of our country binds us together and unifies us all. That goes to the heart of what it means to be an American. And I'd like to, uh, bring out as an example, recently, we opened our gates for the Fourth of July ceremony. We're sixty-five thousand service members, family members, and our guests from Cumberland County came to join us at the end of the night, uh, although the weather treated us okay, it was a little bit warm, uh, but I'm proud to say that with all our guests that came to join us, not a single incident of criminal activity happened the entire afternoon and evening. And that, ladies and gentlemen, I believe is a statement to the degree to which our communities yearn for opportunities to come together. And I'd say, I come here tonight to tell you that we at Fort Bragg yearn for that same opportunity to come together as a community, as friends, and as neighbors. And here in that same spirit, I'd like to discuss just for a moment, a great example of the camaraderie that we enjoyed with our constituent, our, our, our members of the, of the local government, and the renaming commission. And the name Fort Liberty that was not chosen at random, the word liberty conveys the aspirations of those who serve, and it has a special significance for those of us at Fort Bragg and the units in that community. Special Forces, Eighty-Second Airborne, the Eighteenth Airborne Corps, all have a special sentiment to the name Liberty. It is in the Eighty-Second All-American Song. It is part of our core history. During World War II, monuments were erected to commemorate the liberation of France by America, by the Eighty-Second Airborne Division, and it is embedded in the Special Forces motto, "De oppresso liber", to free the oppressed. The very rich ties of liberty and the history right here in Fayetteville hold symbolic and historic value to us, and it represents the- And it represents the aspirations of each of us in uniform, either, or civilians, who serve our nation every day. And the men and women who volunteer and sacrifice, uh, on behalf of our nation strive for the freedoms and, and why we are willing to, and are willing to sacrifice ourselves, place ourselves in harm's way, and with our family's support, uh, strive to further liberty across the world. And so, uh, in that spirit, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for the time, I thank you for your friendship, your camaraderie, and most of all, for being our neighbors here at Fort Bragg. And so, as we say at Fort Bragg, airborne all the way.
Colonel Wilcox, thank you, and, uh, thank you for coming here and being with us tonight. I'd also like to thank for, um, inviting me to be on that naming commission, it was, uh, truly an honor. So what I would ask is that if any, every veteran that's in the building, please stand, every veteran. Keep standing, we want to recognize our veterans. Then I, let's keep standing, then I'd ask every spouse of a veteran to please stand. My wife was in the Navy, and they would tell you the hardest job is the Navy wife, and it was hard on me. Then I would ask everybody that's connected to somebody in the military, brother, sister, cousin, please stand. Colonel Wilcox, and those who, and, and anybody who worked on Fort Bragg, that's probably the rest of them, or swam on Fort Bragg when they used to let us go out there. Colonel Wilcox, if you look around, you'll see that this entire room is just about standing. That's our connection to Fort Bragg, that's our connection to the military. And so, when we talk about inviting you here, we invite you here as family, uh, because we are truly connected together. We thank you, you, we know you just got here, there's all kind of things going on, but we thank you for taking the opportunity and the time to come and be with us tonight. Thank you so very much. Colonel Wilcox, ladies and gentlemen. And Colonel, I know there's a lot of things you have to do on Fort Bragg, so you don't have to stay, thank you so much for coming. Uh, stay as long as you want to, but I know there was some other pressing matters that, uh, that, that may take your attention, so, thank you. All right, that will take us to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, I call for a motion.
So moved.
We approve the consent agenda as presented.
If I can get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. That will take us to our public hearings. Uh, I'll call on the County Manager, Ms. Cannon, to explain the Board of Commissioners' procedures for public hearings.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The arguments by the proponents and the opponents shall be limited to a maximum of ten minutes for each side. If there is no group representative, each speaker shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the ten-minute time limit is obtained. Rebutts will only be permitted at the discretion of the Chairman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side.
Uh, with that, I will open our public hearing, our rezoning cases. Our first case is P. twenty-one dash thirty-six, uh, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a case that is being reheard, and I'm going to ask the county attorney if he has any opening remarks about this case.
Uh, yes, Madam Manager.
Well, wait till you get to the microphone, then, so it can be heard.
Good evening, Commissioners. As the manager pointed out, this case is, is a case that is, is on for a rehearing. Uh, if you look at the, uh, the memo gives the his, well, this thing's not working too well. This case was, uh, was heard originally in August of 2021. It was deferred then to the September twentieth, twenty twenty-one meeting. At that time, it was a request for rezoning of a twelve-point-three-six acre parcel from A-one Agricultural to CP Plan Commercial. It was recommended by the planning staff on the basis that it was consistent with the southeastern Cumberland land use plan because it was, was within a commercial node, uh, within close proximity of the existing intersection. This was out at the, uh, intersection of Tabor Church Road and, uh, how about fifty-three? Cedar Creek Road, Cedar Creek Road, um, out in the county. Uh, the Board of Commissioners denied that rezoning at, at that time on the finding that it was not consistent with the southeast Cumberland land use plan. And the request was, denial of the request was reasonable in the public interest because it was, the area was flood-prone, and this would increase the flooding. Cedar Run Capital had an option on the property at that time, but they have now, since then, acquired it as the owners. And they are the parties, uh, that filed the lawsuit and entered into a consent order for the matter to be sent back to the Board of Commissioners for rehearing. And in this, and they dismissed their lawsuit for, for that. And in, uh, uh, in the discussions on that, they indicated, and it's agreed in the consent order, that they could modify their request to a conditional zoning if they, if they choose to do so. So it, that will be presented again to you tonight, uh, by the, uh, the plaintiffs. This matter was, um, on back in June, and the, uh, the, the applicant at that time asked to defer it again, and the Board consented to it being deferred to this meeting, so that, that's sort of the history on it. Rather than, than me getting back up here, I, I'm going to go ahead and, and, and just go over some of the, the, uh, the, the, the basics about this, since it's been, been a while that you heard any of this. And then, uh, the applicant, you may have some questions for Mr. Howard, and then, uh, the applicant will present his case again.
Mr. Howard's with the zoning, he can do that, you got the legal part, so is, is this a zoning part? And explain it to us again from the zoning part, now that you come back.
Well, this is, okay, this is the zoning.
Right, he's the zoning.
Mine is the zoning part, too, this is.
That's all right. So when, um, Mr. Morfield and I were talking, I do have a copy of the original presentation that we went through, just so you can have some background information, if that's with your permission. So as Mr. Morfield stated, this is the, uh, property in question, it sits in the, um, as you can see, more in the southeastern part of the, uh, of the county. Uh, as he stated, it sits at the intersection of Tabor Church and Cedar Creek Road. Um, the applicant owner is Kathy Tatum Vincent. Uh, the crest, again, was to go from A-one Agricultural District to CP Plan Commercial District, was, as you know, is our more intensive commercial designation. The intent was to put a small-scale retail, specifically, I believe it was just a, uh, a small dollar store, if I'm not mistaken, for about twelve-point-three-six acres plus or minus. You can see that here's, uh, here's, um, Cedar Creek Road, and here's Tabor Church Road that sits right here. The property in question is this uniquely shaped, uh, red outline that you can see here for a little bit, but you can see basically there's A-one, there's CP, uh, zoning designations on the corner existing, uh, as you can see there. Uh, so, uh, surrounding the property is, uh, primarily vacant land, you do have some single-family residential down there. Uh, you have a Dollar General that sits on the corner, and a, and a convenience store that sits just across from that. Uh, and you can see a church and a cemetery, uh, out there as well. As I say, before the zoning out there, you can see the, uh, three of the four corners are zoned for CP Plan Commercial. Uh, this property is, is zoned A-one, along with pretty much a lot of the stuff on that side of the road. R forty, uh, is immediately right across the street. There is no water and sewer out here, uh, there's some hydroconclusion soils, but for the most part, anything that gets built out there would have to be relying on well and septic. Uh, as Mr. Morfield stated there, uh, when we looked at the plan, when staff looked at this, the plan does call for a commercial node out in this area. As I said, the three corners are already out there, which is the start of this node, it's kind of growing. Uh, but the sites in, in, according to the plan, sits within this node, so staff had recommended it as being plan-compliant due to the fact that it does sit in that node, and that node does encourage the development of small commercial uses, and it, which include like limited retail activities. This subject property sitting across the street, just looking across, so that, that's the subject property you can see with the, I don't know if you can see this per se, but there's a for-sale sign up here. Uh, this is looking, uh, south by southeast, uh, with the property immediately on the left-hand side. This is standing on the property, looking immediately across the street, uh, for the most part, it's, uh, just wooded and vegetation. And this is the north view, uh, heading back up Cedar Creek Road. You can see the zoning sign that we posted per the state statutes, uh, for the zoning compliance for the posting notification. So you can see the property in question immediately to the right. So, uh, uh, when this went to the planning board, staff had recommended, for all the aforementioned reasons, uh, approval of the request, when we took it to the planning board at that particular time, the planning board supported staff's recommendation by a unanimous nine-to-zero vote. So that's the last slide, if you have any questions, I can try to answer what I can, unless, Mr. Morfield, you have other things you want to add for your, for your side.
Mr. Morfield.
All right, that's, that's the first one, thank you. Uh, the, it, Mr. Howard's characterization of this as, as being in a commercial node was one of the issues that the, uh, the board had a great deal of questions, uh, about before. And I, I think you really need to look at the southeast Cumberland land use plan to discover that, I mean, to, uh, explore that further. How do you move them up here? Go this way, it's not swiping. Yeah, it's only one page, this is pages separate. First one's like page five. No, no, it's, it's page five in the plan, my second, the second page, that's where I'm looking at, you're getting way down below somehow. Right, now I need to, the second page, so, this is my first page, the second page. Go back, again, the southeast Cumberland land use plan adopted by the board in two thousand seventeen, that's just the, the front of that. I've gone through, um, every... Trying to get it all in size. I, I went through, through the plan and, and, and located every area that talks about commercial node or rural center. And, and this is so that you can get, get a better idea of what this really is. And if you look, the first place, first portion is on page five. Uh, a commercial node is for the purposes, as, as Mr. Howard said, to, uh, a commercial development that meets the needs of the immediate area, harmonious with the surrounding area, preserves the natural environment, concentrated in nodes. Uh, commercial development should generally be located in, in, in nodes, in, at intersections.
Intersections, you said?
At, at intersections. And that would be, you know, the first, if you look just at, at the language in here, at intersections literally means within the intersection. So it'd be front on two, two, two streets, and if you look at, on both streets. If you look at the further discussion about it in the plan, and this is moving down to what would be page... So last page, excuse me, last page was page ninety-five, so five, then you go down to page one oh four, and the, to concentrate commercial development in nodes and preferably at major intersections. This describes a little more about what a commercial node is. And these, 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 uh, these nodes are commer, where commercial establishments will be at the beginnings of rural center. They should initially be approximately three acres in size and be flexible enough to accommodate uses that meet the needs of an expanding rural population. I'm just reading from that first paragraph there at the end of that. Going on down to the next place where commercial nodes are mentioned is on page one eleven in the plan. And then, uh, in the second paragraph shown down on that page, it describes, "These nodes are initially proposed to be three to five acres in size and can accommodate any convenient uses to supply the immediate area in the Cumberland County Land Use Policies Plan." They would be, uh, described as rural centers. That language is just duplicating the language in the policy, uh, plan. It, it, it's, it's the same language, so there's nothing further, uh, just, uh, to learn from looking at the plan, I mean, at the policy plan itself. Page one of, one twelve is the map that was referenced in, uh, in the presentation by Mr. Howard, which just shows these two commercial nodes is the red circles, uh, located at the two intersections. The one up at the top of the page is the one we're talking about at the intersection of, uh, Tabor Church Road and Cedar Creek Road. And I'm trying to get back up, my pages are... I think, uh, all, all the pages are, that are hitting out of here, but the, the big issue with this is that if you look at the language describing the commercial node, and you look at the map that, uh...
You trying to get to the map?
Well, the, the map, that's, Ross, can you get your map back up, Ross?
Where, where you at, the big, the big blow-up? Do you have it plugged in here now?
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Danny's right behind you. How many people does it take to get the map?
You got it upside down, there you go.
Give the map you do the blow-up, the circle.
And this, I, I, I think you got to look at this map that, uh, that, uh, it's taken from the map that was on page, uh, one twelve in, in the plan. But it, the parcels and stuff are not really shown in that map on the, on the plan itself. And if you look at what this does, I, I calculated the area of the, each quadrant in this to be about, it, it would be about thirty-eight acres, thirty-six, thirty, thirty-eight acres for the four quadrants of this intersection. So that circle would be about a hu, over, a little over a hundred and fifty acres. And, and that's the issue is to, for this board, what did you intend by a commercial node when you adopted the plan? If, if you're looking at the literal language in the plan, it appears to be three to five acres in, at the intersection, in, the immediate parcels in the intersection. This is twelve acres removed down at least one parcel from the intersection, as, as Mr. Howard describes, in close proximity. So, so that, that's the real issue in terms of, is whether this is plan-compliant. And, and my suggestion is from, as a legal matter, it's, it's not necessarily warranted in terms of interpreting what the plan that you adopted says, that, that this is a big a hundred and fifty-acre circle that, that is what you intended. The, it's my understanding now that from Mr. Neville, that they may ask for a smaller amount of the property for the zoning, and that'll be in their presentation, but I think for, the thing for the board to keep in mind in evaluating this is, what was, what is the, what did you intend by your plan? Did you really intend these location intersections to be a big hundred and fifty-acre circle? Or did you intend for it to be a small area at the intersections? And that's, that's the way to decide this. Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Boos, uh, did you want to have the public hearing first, or you want to have your question?
I was going to ask them as far as background, two questions.
Go ahead.
One, uh, and you brought...
Ross, if you come to the microphone.
How long has Dollar General been there?
No, that's what they put in there.
There's a Dollar General there, but I think they were talking about putting another similar type store there on that, on that property. As far as that Dollar General, I don't have that information about how long it's been there.
Okay, I didn't know it was pre-two thousand sixteen of this, or since two thousand sixteen kind of ago, all right? And then, second question. And then, second question, if not now, was this irregular border at one time of water?
That's my assumption, 'cause I've never seen something, like typically when it looks like that, then that's a correct assumption.
When Jimmy and I owned some property together, he probably told me that this was mine here and the rest.
That's on the other side of the river.
That's the last time I've seen it.
And I guess, 'cause I wrote down here, the flashing lights are actually at the intersection.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, so, anybody else have any questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing, and Madam Clerk, or the, I mean, did we read?
Yes, sir.
We've already read that. Madam Clerk.
We have three speakers in favor, one speaker in opposition. Our first speaker in favor is Mr. Thomas Neville.
Mr. Neville, Attorney Neville.
Use a few exhibits, is that okay? Put on a easel. I don't want to say too much, 'cause I don't want my time to start.
Nah, that's alright, alright. And we have the packet, I guess that's your packet. I don't know if Mr. Keith and Mr. Booth can really see it, so pull it back just a little bit. Yeah, I think everybody can see it from there. Commissioner Lancaster, can you see that? Okay, there you go. And Mr. Howard, if you want to move, you can, if you need to see it, but it's in the packet. Go ahead.
Thanks so much for opportunity to speak again tonight, come before you. Just as a way of introduction, we all agreed to this consent order.
Use that microphone, so, yeah, there you go.
We all agreed to this consent order, 'cause we felt like we didn't, I didn't do such a good job of explaining it the first time. So we're back here tonight, and I'll try again. So, to be very clear, the, the order from Superior Court did allow us to essentially add conditions to our presentation or to our application. So to be very clear, that we only intend to develop two point two-two acres of the entire tract, and we're asking that, that be treated as a zoning condition. Standing here for you tonight, we do not intend, and we are agreeing to restrict the other remaining acres of the parcel as part of this application. So again, we only desire to rezone two point two acres of the entire tract. Very clear on that. The proposed business is a Family Dollar. To be clear, that's what it is. One of the ladies, one of the speakers who will come behind me, will give you some more detail as to the Family Dollar. One thing I'd like to stress is that the Family Dollar that would be built there has a, a greater grocery component to it. We believe that fits a need in rural areas, particularly not only retail, but the grocery aspect of these types of stores, we believe that is a need in this area. I went out again today, the closest store to it, obviously is the Dollar General, it's located very close to that, but it's almost five miles up the road before you run into another convenient type store. Living in a rural area, I recognize that we use these stores quite a bit, so I'd like to stress that to you as well. The surrounding area in your packet, you'll notice it's not just a Dollar General, it's a, it's a gas station, there's a Dollar General, church is down from that, there's a cemetery down from that, going at three minutes. There's quite a bit of activity in this intersection, and without getting, you know, kind of straddled by the definition of what a, what a node is and what a node's not, let me just present it this way. What makes perfectly good sense is that you preserve rural characters by developing along major highways, corridors, or at intersections. By putting development in these areas, you basically, for lack of better words, save the remaining countryside. And that's why it makes sense to develop in commercial nodes, whether you call it a node or not. Lastly, we've only got seventeen seconds left. This land is going to be developed by my client in some manner, whether it's residential or whether it's what we desire. I would submit to you that the least or the, the, the best way to do it is actually to allow us to what we want to do, which is to build this retail store, because the impact on the overall parcel is actually much less by doing that. If we went in there and put all the houses that we were allowed to do...
Your time's up. Go ahead, I'm gonna let you finish that sentence.
It may be a compound sentence.
Oh, Lord, this is an attorney's for you, but I tell you what, I knew I shouldn't have let him have a little leeway, go ahead.
My, my point is this, the impact on septic, on water, on these issues that are very near and dear to you, actually will be greater if we're allowed to develop it to the full extent of its residential, versus what we're requesting with the condition that we only develop the two point two acres.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Ms. Amanda Madera.
Can you see that?
Yes, ma'am. We've got it right here.
Alright, there you go, perfect. Good evening, my name is Amanda Madera, and I am a real estate manager for Family Dollar in Dollar Tree. I think most people think in my profession that we take a dart, throw it on a map, and squeeze as many Dollar Trees and stores that we can within a community as we can, but that's far from the truth. We work with our analytics team to take a population density and find a need within the community that's not being met. The point of these stores is to serve the underserved. And what's exciting is, is even though Mr. Thomas said that it is a Family Dollar, it's a new concept of ours that is half Dollar Tree and half Family Dollar, we call it a combo store. Its legal entity would be a Family Dollar, but it'll be half and half. You'll take the items that you normally find in a Dollar Tree for a dollar twenty-five and also combine it with the Family Dollar grocery items. We'll have about thirty doors of freezers and coolers where you find your bread, your milk, your eggs, all of your frozen meats, vegetables, you'll have your canned fruits, canned vegetables, all of your needs and laundry, and your paper towels and toilet paper. Not too long ago, we all needed that pretty bad, could have used another store. We always had those in stock compared to your grocery stores, which would have helped. Sorry. Not only will we bring jobs to the community, we also keep our competitors honest with their pricing, their product availability, and the, the look of the store. You have someone coming new in, they, they tend to clean up their act as well, which, which helps the look of the community as well. Much like your, your seal of your county of Cumberland, everyone rolls their eyes when you hear about a Dollar Store, but out of many stores with this new concept, this one with your dollar twenty-five items for your local teachers could help fund their classrooms. And out of the many Dollar Stores, this one could help your single parents with their grocery items under a, a tight budget. We've had this concept rolled out in many rural towns in the United States, and it's, it's proving true to help the community with their basic needs, and we're definitely serving the underserved, so we hope that you guys will accept this coming to your town.
Go right ahead. I think that was...
Was that the whole time?
I'm sorry.
Good?
Thank you. It didn't beep, that's what... Next speaker?
Our third speaker in favor is Mr. Robert Bartlett.
Good evening, Robert Bartlett, Bartlett Engineering and Surveying. I've done the engineer on this site. Believe when this came to you a year ago, there was, I wasn't able to present it, a colleague of mine that works for me was here, and I think there was a lot of questions and concerns about flooding and stormwater and, and some of that, so I'll try and clear up some of that. So, as stated earlier, the rezoning requests are originally for twelve acres, a little over twelve acres. The conditional zoning we're asking for is only to develop two point two acres of the site. The, the remaining acreage would be left undeveloped, undisturbed, nothing on it. That could be a condition of the zoning. So on that, you got a very small area of the overall tract that would be developed, that would have impacts on it. On that development, you can see on this plan where there is a, what's referred to as a stormwater SCM, stormwater control measure. With that, it's already been designed, laid out, calculated to meet the ordinances, the state and the county requirements. I've looked at the, the storm events for the two-year, ten-year, twenty-five-year, and hundred-year events, for each of those, this stormwater SCM would actually reduce the peak flow runoff. So what that means is, that yes, you are correct in that eastern boundary, there is a creek there, there used to be a pond to the north of that, that the dam broke years back during the storm, it's dry now, but that's the remnants of that creek where, where that property line is. So the water flows to there, but this, all the water coming off the parking lot and the building would flow through this stormwater SCM, reduce it, reduce the peak flows, that there actually be less peak flow runoff coming from this development after it is than it is right now. As referred to earlier, you know, if it's not commercial, it can be developed residential as it is right now. You know, if you looked at even putting five or six residential houses there, you're gonna get as much impervious area on rooftops and drives and things like that as you have with the proposed development. The difference would be with residential, you wouldn't have a stormwater control measure to reduce that peak flow. So the peak flow's gonna increase, get to the creek faster, go downstream faster, you're gonna see some impacts there. From an environmental standpoint, wells and septic systems, yes, this would require well and septic system, but you're looking at a single well with just very little use on it, not somebody needing it to bathe, to cook, everything else, which is very limited, basically flushing a toilet. The septic on it for these stores, the state has recognized that you're looking at the same flow from a, a Family Dollar store as you have for a two-bedroom house. So that's the size of septic system and the impact there, looking at one two-bedroom house versus five or six potential residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Our first speaker in opposition, who is also our final speaker on this case, is Ms. Vicki Mullins.
Hello, Board. My name is Vicki Mullins.
Wait a minute, she hadn't put your three up. She got you at zero already.
Okay, I know.
I don't know, they must have wanted to hear from you today, Ms. Mullins.
Okay. Name is Vicki Mullins, I live at five nine oh five Turnbull Road, which is in Cedar Creek. Okay? I've come to speak in opposition to this. If you look on this map, again, that backside is, used to be Dudley's Pond, used to be Willer's Pond, used to be Dudley's Pond, of course, yes, he's right, it flooded. It flooded the whole area down there, even our church cemetery and all. I mean, now, a year ago, they just finished the wetlands. That is a wet, turned it right back into wetlands, okay? All that, in our creek, okay, that creek runs right behind our church, okay? We don't want it anymore contaminated. Gen X is bad enough, okay? I mean, I'm still carrying water. This is a no-go. This is not actually on the corner, which is in the plan that we did in 2016, which I was on, okay? It's not on the corner. It is up from it, by the, by this, by y'all's map, and also the acreage there is not twelve, what is it, twelve point three-six? That is only nine point eighty-one acres there. So, that's wrong. So, and I'm just asking you guys, I mean, we have enough contamination going on, adding this to it, and everything else, I'm just asking you guys to just really think hard on this before you vote. Because we live there, we know everything about this place, this is a historic area, we're just asking, we just, you know, don't build it. If you want to live in the city, go up to the city. But we've already got, you know, the Dollar General is already there. It gets broken into all the time. They kick in the glass, they break it in, there's drug deals going down. Of course, you know, we're all working on this as a community, but it's not gonna last. They're gonna tear it up, they can't get workers to even keep the Dollar General stores open. I'm just gonna tell you, 'cause I'm down there. Those doors are closed more than they're open, because a lot of the people don't want to work, they're scared to. So, because they're scared of what somebody's gonna do to them. So it's just something to, you know, I'm just asking you guys to look it over and just, I mean, it, it's probably gonna flood again. So, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, comments?
I have a question for the engineer.
Commissioner Keith.
The engineer, please.
Put your mic down.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the present, thank you for the presentation. I see the value in the retention pond, retain, well, you called it something else, what did you call it?
Stormwater Control Measure.
Okay, retention, we'll, we'll call it a retention pond, just kidding. At what capacity, obviously, you know, when, we, we've had some pretty biblical type storms in the last couple of years, but at what capacity will that stormwater retention pond mitigate any flooding? Can you answer that in general terms?
In all cases, up to the hundred-year storm, it's designed, it takes the hundred-year storm event into consideration with the design of it.
I, I'm asking your opinion on this as an engineer, but is the property less susceptible to flooding with the retention pond in place than without the retention, even with all the impervious area?
It's less susceptible to flooding with the retention pond.
Even putting the impervious area of the building and the parking lot in there?
That's correct, because the, the detention pond takes that into account, holds that water, and then releases it over a slower period of time, two to five days, as opposed to it all running off at one time.
Okay.
So, so you have more water running off the site, but it runs off over a slower period of time. So by the time some of that water runs off, the rest of the water's already gone.
Yep, I did. Thank you, I, I appreciate it. And, Mr. Chair, if I could, ask Mr. Neville a question.
No compound sentences, though.
Is that for me or him?
Both of you. Yes, sir.
You're, you're wanting, your, your client is agreeable to only developing two point two acres?
Yes.
Of, of the entire property. Now, is the entire property nine acres, or is that right?
The, the entire property actually by our chart is nine point eight acres.
Okay.
The twelve point some acres I think came, I think from plan, which I believe appears in the deed. When it was actually surveyed, it's nine acres. We're not totally sure where the twelve came from.
Okay.
The main point is, whatever it is, willing development, we're designed to...
And with the conditional use of all this remaining open space as part of the...
Open space.
Green space, and...
You can either, we'll agree to designate it as RA, we'll, we'll agree to designate it as green space, designate it as open space, we'll, I stand here and the owner's here and can confirm, or affirm, we'll agree to any of those restrictions.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you very much.
I entertain the motion, if no one else has any... Oh, I guess I'll close the public hearing, thank you, Madam Clerk.
And, Mr. Chair, the, the appropriate form of the motion is in, in the memo, so you got a form of motion to approve or to deny, if you follow that language, and since I had to leave a blank on the number of acres because I didn't know what it was gonna be, and this would be a conditional zoning with the conditions being only two point two acres will be developed, and the remainder of the parcel will be left as open space.
Anybody have any other questions?
Okay, anybody got the motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make it.
Go right ahead. Commissioner Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the, in the rehearing of case P one, I'm sorry, P two one dash three six, I move the approved of rezoning request for two point two acres of the subject property from A one Agriculture District to CP Plan Commercial District, or the appropriate conditional zoning if requested, and find the request consistent with the southeast Cumberland Land Use Plan adopted in 2017. Because the subject property is within reasonable proximity of an intersection designated as a commercial node in the plan, the request is reasonable in the public interest because without public water and sewer, the intensity of the commercial development will be limited, and this small commercial development enhances the rural center development envisioned by the plan for the commercial node to serve the surrounding community. In addition, the conditional zoning is that the remaining acreage... In addition, the conditional zoning is that the remaining acreage of the property be committed to green space and not developable.
Still second.
All second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster, Booth, and Keith, voting in opposition. Commissioners Council, Stewart, Chairman Adams, and Commissioner Evans.
Motion fails. Thank you. That will take us to case zoning.
Mr. Chairman, you, the board would need to make a motion to deny. Right now, you haven't taken any action.
If I can get the motion, I got yours up.
The form of that motion is also at the end of the memo.
Do what?
The form of the motion to deny is at the end of the memo.
Commissioner Stewart.
In the rehearing of case P twenty-one thirty-six, I move to deny the rezoning request for the nine acres of the subject property from A-one Agriculture District to CP Plan Commercial District, or the appropriate conditional zoning if requested, and find the request inconsistent with the Southeast Cumberland Land Use Plan adopted in 2017, because the subject property is not located at the intersection designated as a commercial node by the plan. Denial of the request is reasonable and in the public's interest because expansion of the commercial node to parcels beyond those located at the intersection greatly increases commercial development beyond the three to five acres in plan, contemplates for the initial commercial node, and diminishes the rural character and zoning benefits to all of the adjoining parcels not located at the intersection.
If I can get a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Council, Stewart, Chairman Adams, Commissioner Evans, voting in opposition. Commissioner Lancaster, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Keith, the motion passes.
Thank you. That will take us to zoning case twenty-two zero zero four-six.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As you can see by the general location map, that this case Z O N twenty-two oh oh four-six is located out off of, close to the eastern part of the county around the Stedman area. The applicant owner is Toddland Enterprises One LLC. The request is to go from A-one Agricultural to R-twenty Residential. The intent, as you'll see in the pictures as we go through the presentation, is to remove two existing older mobile homes on the property and then replace it with a duplex. So it's a, it's a two-for-two unit sort of replacement, at least that's what the applicant has informed staff and been working with us on. So the acreage is about 1.4 acres. You can see, this is Magnolia Church Road, running north and south here, Wade Stedman Road over here, and you'll probably get a little bit better view once we get into the colorized pictures here in just a little bit, but the property in question is this red highlighted little small acre that sits, or this 1.4 acre sitting with the crosshatch that you see right there on the map. Pretty much around this area is residential, just a mix of manufactured home, you do have a mobile home park that's been identified to the north there, and then you have some manufactured and single-family in the immediate area. This is the property in question, as you can see, there's R forty A to the south, which, you know, the A designation on these designations means that it's R forty, but it does allow mobile or manufactured homes, that's what the A stands for in these designations. So you have R forty here across the street, and just for your curiosity, these lot sizes, we did the math on what's across the street here, those are basically forty thousand minimum square foot lot sizes as well. There is no water and sewer out here, but it seems to have good soils, at least by the maps that we've seen, there's no hydroxic soils located on the property. When we look at the Stedman Area Land Use Plan, it does designate this as suburban density residential, so the associated zoning districts would be R-twenty, R-thirty, RR, and R-forty. We feel that, as staff, when we looked at this, looked at the policies, that the request is consistent with the adopted land use plan. This is the subject property in question, as I said before, the applicant has expressed his intent to remove the mobile homes that you see on the picture above and replace it with a duplex. This is looking south on Magnolia Church Road with the property on the left-hand side, you can see the actual, the rezoning sign here. This is standing on the property, looking immediately across the street, you have homes that are in the area, and then as you're looking north on Magnolia Church, you can just generally get an idea of what you're dealing with out there, again, with the sign and the homes on the right-hand side. When this went to the board, staff had recommended approval of the request, when this went to the planning board, they also supported the request by a unanimous seven to zero vote. So if you have any questions, I'll try to be able to answer what I can.
Commissioner Keith.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, the existing zone, the existing parcel is 1.4 acres?
Mm-hmm.
But it's A-one, right?
It's A-one, that's correct.
How do they have two houses on A-one?
Yeah.
1.4.
That's, those homes, by what we can see, have probably been there for quite a long time, whereas our assumption is that they were there probably prior to zoning, but that's our best assumption.
Kind of a convenient answer, but I mean
Well, that's the only thing that we can assume based off the history of what we've seen out there.
Okay, well, the reality is, you're saying two for two. Two is, one's out of compliance, and they actually, if my math is close, they could actually put three units up there on 1.4 acres if we do R-twenty.
They could, so we did the math, if you did it at R-thirty, it would be very, very slim about what they could be able to allow, for example, they could do two homes at R-thirty, but they could do three homes at R-twenty, but when we looked and talked to environmental health, there's a number of considerations of, when you take into consideration the setbacks, and then what would be allowed for a septic system for two units out there, we don't know yet, but our assumption is that it would be kind of limiting when you start going through the process of pulling permits.
But isn't a duplex considered multifamily?
We don't know, it's not considered, because we don't really have a multifamily per se in our ordinance, we have, we have a, an allowance for certain types of residential that's based off the square footage that you're allowed. I think colloquially, we would call it a duplex because there are two units within one building.
Right, which significantly reduces your setbacks and everything else if it's one building.
It could, yes, sir.
So they could do the same thing with three buildings, or three units, and they could make it a triplex.
Right.
They could.
Possibly, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions? If not, I will open the public hearing.
There are no speakers.
All right. I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, go right ahead. Commissioner Lancaster.
Z O N twenty-two double zero forty-six, I move to approve the rezoning request from A-one Agriculture District to R-twenty Residential District, and find the request is consistent with the Stedman Area Land Use Plan, which calls for suburban density residential at this location. The request is reasonable and in the public interest, as well as compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use, activities, and zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster, Council, Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Booth, voting in opposition. Commissioner Stewart, Chairman Adams, and Commissioner Keith, the motion passes.
That takes us to zoning case twenty-two forty-seven.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I kind of got a little bit ahead of myself. I also just wanted to take the time, because he actually came out this evening, is Mr. Stan Crumpler, our planning board chairman.
I was going to recognize when we were finished, but you go right ahead.
That's right.
I saw Mr. Crumpler right over there.
Case forty-seven. So as you can see by the location map, board members, the star indicates, it's just a little bit past Eastover, you can see in the central eastern part of the county. The applicant owner is Wayne T. Younts Realty and Construction Incorporated, the agent is map surveying, Mr. Michael, Mike Adams. The request is to go from A-one Agricultural to R-forty Residential District, so this is a conventional district, this is not conditional. The intent is to create a single-family subdivision out in this area for about, just a little over thirty-five acres. You can see the area crosshatch here sits at Wade Stedman Road, sits in the corner here, sits across the street from the Bonita Farms subdivision, for those of you that might be familiar with this area out here. There's a road that comes in through this property, Royal Williams Road, which accesses the lots here in the back. The subject property is currently vacant, primarily in the area, you do have agriculture, but you have single-family residential, and you have manufactured homes as well. So this is the property in question, as you can see, primarily surrounding the property is A-one, you have the R-thirty subdivision that sits right across the street as Bonita Hills, we did look up the lot sizes in there, and they are roughly about three-quarters of an acre, they're thirty thousand square foot lots. You have R-forty that sits to the south, I actually wanted to zoom out just a little bit to get a little bit more of a perspective, so we have some R-forty subdivisions that are north of here that you can see that are currently zoned, we also have some R-forty that's down here, but we also have some more R-forty subdivisions that are a little bit further off the map, but the further I zoomed out, you wouldn't be able to see the parcel line, so this is as close as I could be able to get, so you could reasonably be able to see where parcels are. The property in question has the little black dot on it, sitting right there. So there is water out here, it has Eastover water, there is no sewer, and the soils, for the most part, are generally fairly good, you have some patches up in the north, but again, that would be worked out during the site development portion of all this. This is part of the Eastover Land Use Plan, it does sit on the border, the, you have the Bethany Area Land Use Plan that sits across the street, but this particular piece of land is subject to the Eastover Land Use Plan. Associated districts are R-twenty, R-thirty, and R-forty, which this, as far as staff was concerned, complies with that, to protect, to preserve and protect farmland, we feel like R-forty or nearly-acre lots meets that requirement, and there's also stipulations in the policy of providing a diversity of housing options in these particular areas. So again, staff felt that the request was consistent with the adopted land use plan. When you look at the property, pretty much an agricultural land now, you can see, another view of the subject property, that's the Royal Williams Road that you can see going back and into the back, to the homes that sit in the, behind the tree line back in there. This is the north view on Wade Stedman Road with the property immediately on the left-hand side. This is the east view, looking immediately across the street. And that's the south view of Wade Stedman Road with the property immediately on the right, and of course, we did post it in compliance with state posting laws. So staff had recommended approval of the request, when this went to the planning board, they had recommended approval, but it was a split vote by four to three. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Did we do one just farther up Wade Stedman Road not long ago?
I do so many of these commissioners, hard for me to keep track anymore.
Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Booth.
I have a couple. What was the name of the subdivision you said that's over there?
Bonita Farms.
How long's that been there?
That is a good question, do we know how long it's been there?
One year, twenty years?
We don't have that specific information, I hate to give you a number off the bat.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Crumpler, do you know, because I mean, he lives out there, and how long was that there?
My guess is that's probably been there maybe ten or twelve years.
Ten or twelve years, there you go.
I could be wrong, but I would think it's ten or twelve years.
Do you go by that pretty regularly?
Well, if you're going, you have to come to the, to the microphone.
Okay, you go by that pretty regularly, then?
Enough to be familiar with.
Talk into the microphone, Mr. Crumpler.
I was familiar with this as I was growing up, because my family was farmers, and we went out to look at crops out here, so I am familiar with this property.
Okay. In the, since everything out there is basically two inches above sea level, has that subdivision experienced some of the issues we've had with some of the newer ones, where the runoffs torn it up, or since it's been there ten, twelve years, is it, is it okay?
They have had some degree of stormwater issues out there with that. We debated on this for a long time, the night that we
We don't want to get into what the, what
Yes, they have that.
Okay, I wasn't familiar with that subdivision, so, thank you.
And one added thing, we did have people that spoke on this that live back in this corner over here that testified that they did have issues too.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crumpler. Commissioner Keith.
Thank you. I noticed that there's not a site plan submitted, and I know we didn't have to, but is all of that land buildable?
I would, it's kind of hard to say until you get into the nuts and bolts of all of it, Commissioner, that's such a subjective term.
Well, it's not wet, or, I mean, it, R-forty gives the ability for someone to consolidate homes in an area, not necessarily on the entire tract, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I was just wondering if some of it was not buildable to where they would, they would have to do that, and we don't know, and there is no site plan?
As of Friday, five o'clock, there was no plan submitted to my staff, and we, and there's not one associated, since it's not a conditional zoning district.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing, are there any speakers?
We have one speaker in favor, two in opposition. Our first speaker in favor is Mr. Michael Adams.
Mike Adams, owner of map surveying, we did the surveying work out here, I submitted applicant, application. Mr. Younts would have been here, but he had hip surgery a month or so ago, and he's still recuperating, so he called me about four-thirty and said, please come out.
Do you need that map? Because I came down, if somebody can put it back up, I don't know if he needs it. Can you stop that just a second?
I think, uh
Here comes Danny behind you.
Yeah, I don't know what happened.
There go Danny.
Set your papers on it.
All right, we'll start you back now.
All right. We do have a plan for this, so what we've done, if you notice, to the south, there's some lots down there, those are two-acre lots. This entire parcel was about sixty-two acres when he bought it. He has put twelve lots to the south there, again, those are two-acre lots, have already been approved, he's working on the erosion control plan and putting houses out there. We have a approved plan already that we are coming in on the dirt road, we're going to pave the road, pave it all the way through, and then there's going to be a road right down basically through the middle of the field with a cul-de-sac. We have nineteen lots right now. The area, Mr. Keith was saying, those hydroxic soils, those on the northwest side of that road are two- or three-acre lots because of those soils. So again, we submitted that last year, we have approval for nineteen lots in this area. When Mr. Younts, of course, is in the process of doing this, getting estimates, these roads are going to be DOT, we have an engineer working, of course, getting all the proper approvals, he is, will address the stormwater. Of course, the cost has gone up considerably. He's putting in the same road, so his thinking was, he'd like to maybe get a little more lots if we could, so what we're doing, we're actually asking for five more lots. We have nineteen approved, he's asking for five more. That's basically the gist of the rezoning.
I don't know if you've got any more time or not, because it went off on me, so, oh, you got fifty-three seconds, go ahead, it just kind of died.
That's basically it.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is there one way in and one way out?
There will be, yes, sir.
Is there one way in and one way out?
Yes. And there's a no-access ecement along Wade Stedman, of course, that's from DOT.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Another speaker?
Our next speaker is our first speaker in opposition, Ms. Robin Bridges.
Good evening.
Robin Bridges, two-eight-eight-six Wade Stedman Road. I did send the board two emails over the last two weeks, and I do have some pictures of the flooding on Bonita Farms, if you'd like to look at them, I emailed them to you today.
If you hand them to Mr. Rawls right there.
First of all, my first objection is traffic, this would be the densest subdivision along Wade Stedman Road from Route thirteen to Maxwell Road, and it, that is a very dangerous corner right there. Infrastructure Infrastructure, these additional homes, we have one grocery store, the additional cars in infrastructure would not keep up with that. Farming, most of the area right there is farming. I would tell you that Bonita Farms was built in two thousand seven, and that was over fifteen years ago, and this plot is really largely surrounded about that. And the land use plan, the eastover land use plan, if you go through it on pages forty-nine, forty-one, thirty-one, thirty, and fifty-five, they do say that they want use development techniques that preserve rural character. R-40 does not, and Bethany would object to the additional driveways. But I'm getting to the heart of the matter. Mr. Younts isn't here, it's unfortunate, but the most egregious thing we see happening out in this area is that this would be phase two of that phase one that's lower. On seven-twenty-one, DEQ inspection report says the builder was in violation of three statutes. I sent those into your email on eight-ten. Mr. Younts was re-inspected today on that property and found to be in violation. Some of the original violations from seven-twenty-one were still there, and I have an email today from DEQ that cites that there's no construction entrance installed, that there's potential construction debris in the roadway, that there's no erosion control measures in place, which of course, over one acre, he is required to do, and that a certificate of coverage, which has to be in place before you can do groundbreaking activities, is not in place. So, the COC is not there. He's in flagrant violation of the law regarding these measures, and has been continuously for at least a month on that adjacent property. I sent in pictures of those stormwater issues. I've sent in the actual letters from DEQ. Please send a strong message to builders and do not allow rezoning of an area already prone to difficulty by flooding and by a builder who does not comply with the law. More homes create more issues, and they also increase impervious soil, which will be exacerbated by these violations that we see by someone who's irresponsibly discharging their responsibilities.
Thank you. The next speaker?
Our second and last speaker in opposition is Ellen Starling.
You can pull that down. There you go.
Sorry, I'm a little short. Hi, my name's Ellen Starling. I live at three-one-two-three Royal Williams Road, so I live directly behind the property in question. I'm speaking on behalf of my entire family. We have seven houses back there currently, and about two cars per house, so you say about fourteen cars come up and down the dirt road on an average day. Our biggest issue is drainage points. We have not seen a drainage plan in place currently. It drains onto my property, and then when my property floods, it drains all the way back to my father's at the very bottom, and with the drainage, it's causing a huge issue. You cannot control agricultural water, but once you start disturbing the, once you start disturbing the ground currently, you become responsible for the drainage water. You become responsible for how you have that plan in place. Where's the water gonna go at this point? You now have created houses, you have concrete, you have paved areas, and now a paved road. Where's the, where's the ditches? Are you, what plan are you putting in place? On top of that, that also increased, if you do nineteen to twenty-four houses, you're going from fourteen cars accessing that area, all the way up to eighty to possibly a hundred cars coming in and out of that access. We have seen over the years, because I've grown up there, been born there, born and raised, and I've seen multiple, multiple deaths on that curve, because it gets very slick, it's very sharp, and you have the entrance of this place going straight off the curve. It's dangerous, and that is a huge risk and a huge concern as well. So, daily traffic is going to increase tremendously. Oh, and as before, we were mentioned before that Mr. Younts has come back and talked to us and said, oh, yeah, we're coming back there. Y'all really like that we're creating and paving the road. Nobody spoke to us. I have went back and talked to my family just to make sure, and nobody spoke to us. Nobody's contacted us. Nobody's communicated anything, but he's told and made those false accusations that he spoke to us, and nobody spoke to us at this time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other speakers?
There are no further speakers.
Then I will close the public hearing. Any commissioner have any questions or comments? Uh, Mr. Rawls, then I will entertain a motion. Don't y'all rush to make this motion.
Wait a minute.
I guess y'all thinking. I'm gonna give you time to think on this.
I move to deny this request.
Is that the motion? You want to read it? Here it is. These computers, sometime the Wi-Fi goes down. The Wi-Fi goes down.
I move to deny the rezoning request from A1 Agricultural District to R-40 Residential District, if I find the request is not consistent with the eastover area land use plan is not in harmony with surrounding land use activities and zoning, and is not reasonable or in the interest...
Say a second. Say, because you could state, state, state... Say the reason that it's not in the interest, uh, map council, interest because, what was your, what was your concern? What was your concern that caused you to deny it?
Oh...
The roadway, the flood?
I think it was the flooding or the...
The same, the flooding of the, of the property, the amount of water that was standing after just a little rain.
I second it.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
That is unanimous.
All right. Thank you. That takes us to the next zoning case?
Yes, sir. I believe this is forty-nine? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this is forty-nine.
All right.
Wait a minute. Forty-nine?
All right, Commissioners. This case, as you see, is pretty much centered geographically, right in the middle of Cumberland County, just sitting just outside of the city of Fayetteville. You see by the star on the map, on the east side of the river. The applicant owner is Roman and Cynthia Price. The request is going from RR, A1, and M1P Industrial to A1 Agricultural. So, for all intents and purposes, it's somewhat of a downzoning of the property going back to A1. The intent, as indicated by the applicant and my staff, is that he wishes, or they wish, I should say, to just put a house on it and then run a number of operations as sort of a self-contained little operation that's owner-run and occupied on the site. So, putting it a home and then putting a sawmill, dog kennel, and a family cemetery plot, all of which are allowed under the A1 zoning district for about thirty-two-point-eight acres. I think it'd be, so, this is the subject property in question. This is Plymouth Street. This sits pretty much literally right on the Fayetteville city limits, just outside of the city limits. This is Whitehead Road. You can see by the types of land uses you have, it's pretty much a wooded area. You have a church that sits here off of Plymouth Street. You have a single-family home sitting here, and you have some industrial things going on here. Snyder semi-trailer stores, construction, and then a landscaping operation that you can see down here. So, again, going from RR, I think the colorations will show you it just a little bit better. So, there are three designations on here, so this will clean up a number of split zoning issues that are going on with the site. You have the A1 that's here. There is MP very lightly down here in the corner, and then, of course, there's RR here, so there's, it would consolidate all that and put that back into an A1 designation in compliance with pretty much what you see toward the eastern edge of their property. So, when you look at the site itself, there is water out in this area, but it's, as you can see here, indicated by our GIS map, there is no sewer that's out in this area, and there are some situations of hydroic and hydroic inclusion soils that are evident. So, when we looked at the land use plan, this is, we deemed it not to be compliant because the associated zoning districts would be R-seven-point-five and R-fifteen, but since they're taking it to a larger lot size, by your vote, if you decide to approve it, would automatically change the plan back to a larger type designation for this particular piece of land. So, the subject property itself, this is standing on Plymouth Street, as you can see, looking across, pretty much a wooded area. This is south on Plymouth Street with the property immediately on the left-hand side. This is standing on Plymouth Street, looking west, looking across the street, and this is looking north on Plymouth Street. You can see the zoning sign that we had placed in front of the property. Staff recommends approval of the request. When this went to the planning board, they also recommended approval to go back to the A1 designation by a seven-to-zero vote, so it was unanimous at that meeting. So, if you've got any questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On that particular, on that particular map, you showed where there was a church there. Did anybody speak from the church?
We haven't received anything from the, from the church, to my knowledge, no, sir. And there was nobody, I don't believe, anybody that came to the planning board meeting that spoke on the case either.
What, do you know what name of the church was?
That I do not know.
Okay.
Offhand.
Thank you.
Any others have any questions? I do. The A1 behind it, are those houses? I know where the R-10 is.
This right here?
All of those back there?
Uh, there's not really, I mean, there's not a whole lot out there. It's all pretty much wooded. I think there's one house that sits on this lot here, and I think there's some houses maybe in this area here, but for the most part, it's wooded.
I just don't want them to start calling me, because those dogs start barking. Man, put that kennel out there. All right. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
I will close the public hearing. Can I get a motion?
Okay. In case zero N two-two-zero-zero-four-nine, I move to approve the rezoning request from RR Rural Residential District. A1, I don't have my right glasses, I'm sorry. A1 Agricultural District and M1P Plan Light Industrial District to the A1 Agricultural District, and find that the, is that right?
Yes.
Request is not consistent with the eastover land area use plan, which calls for suburban density residential at this location. However, the Board of Commissioners finds that the request is an amendment to the adopted current eastover area land use plan, and that the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional request or application for amendment to said map, and it would produce, promote larger lot sizes than what the plan calls for, and is reasonable and in the public interest, because the uses allowed in the A1 Agricultural District would be compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and rezon.
Say a second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster Council.
I think it was everybody. He put his hand. It's unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you didn't have yours. Okay.
Voting...
I have my head down.
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster Council, Stuart, Chairman Evans.
Adams.
I'm sorry. Chairman Adams. My apologies. Commissioner Booth and Commissioner Keith voting in opposition. Commissioner Evans, a motion passed.
All right, thank you. That takes us to zoning case twenty-two fifty.
Commissioners, this case is case twenty-two oh-oh-five-oh. This is located in the more southern area of Fayetteville, between Fayetteville and Hove Mills, as you can see, indicated by the location map with the star. The applicant owner is Majestic Mobility LLC and Rudy McMillan. The request was to go from R-six Residential District to CP Plan Commercial District. The intent was to expand into the existing home that was on the site for an office use or expanding his business into the office that is right next door. This is a very busy map, obviously. You can see here, this is Owen Drive in Cumberland. For all that you know, there's a, this is a pretty busy intersection for that area of the county. You can see that we have a sort of smattering of C-three, but a lot of dormant districts out here. C-three is our current CP, our most intensive commercial district, but you have R-six, R-six A, and various types of residential and commercial densities, but I think the color map will show you this in just a minute. So, the acreage for the request itself is only about point-two-two acres, so it's a relatively small piece of property that is, that is in this area. So, you can see, there's Owen Drive here, sitting on the Fayetteville city limits line. Here's Cumberland Road. Pretty much this area's got a lot of housing in this area. You can see there's, there's a construction operation that's here. You have O'Reilly Auto Parts, the Vine, and just various types of highway-intensive types of commercial uses. So, this piece of property sits right here, sandwiched on this very slender lot. The coloration, I think, should help be able to clean this up a little bit. So, the request itself is R-six here. This is the C-three designation. As I said before, the C-three designation is dormant. It complies to CP, which is our heaviest commercial intensity. As we get a little bit further in, when staff had looked at, trying to make their recommendation, we worked with the applicant to maybe amend the request. Staff felt that if you look at where Katy Street is, it sits here, and then it's off of a side street that, it's a side street off of a side street off of a main road. So, staff felt as though that putting our most commercial, intensive commercial designation off of a side street, off of a side street, off of the road, back in there probably was a little bit too intensive. So, we worked with the applicant, and the applicant agreed to change his request to ONIP, which is Office and Institutional, which would allow him to do what he wanted to do, would decrease the intensity back in that area a little bit, because the roads are, for all intents and...
Let me make sure I understand that. That got me. So, you had a problem with off the, off the road, off the road to do that, but he changed it and can still do that? Is that what you told me?
Well, like, for good planning principles, though, is that we didn't want to encourage more C-three or CP zoning.
I got that, but what I'm saying is, you had a problem with them being off the road, off the road to have that because of all of that, but you don't mind him still doing the exact same thing, just changed what you, what we identified as. That seems to be what you said.
Well, yeah, I mean, like, to some degree, but I mean, if, if the applicant decided to sell the property, we're looking at what it could be in the future. His plans could fall through tomorrow, and then, you know, we have a pretty intensive commercial zoning designation that's back in that street. Office uses also, we think, would serve as a good buffering for around any of the types of R-sixes that we have back in this area as well, too. So, the applicant wishes to move into the house right here, and we think it would be a good use just to be able to focus a little bit more on what, what the applicant really wanted to do with the property, which is just move his office into the house. But, you know, C-three would allow things like bars, nightclubs. You could put a whole lot of stuff back there, and we just didn't think it, expanding the existing C-three out there to allow those types of uses would be wise. We talked to the applicant about it, and he agreed in writing that he didn't have a problem with the ONI zoning as an alternative recommendation when we went to the planning board. So, there is water and sewer that's out in this area as well, too. When we looked at the actual request going to CP, we felt it was not consistent with the adopted land use plan, just due to the compatibility of the uses that were in the area. This is subject to the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan. So, this is the subject property in question, so it's an existing house that would be converted into an office for the, for the adjacent use, for the, for the applicant's business. So, as you see, this is a dead-end street as well, so we had some concerns about it. Again, going through the intensity on a dead-end street, if it went C-three, we were concerned about what types of truck traffic would be going back on these roads that, for all intents and purposes, don't really have a lot of width, and they're kind of, I would say, a little bit substandard for truck traffic for that type of intensity. This is standing on Katy Street, looking across the street, and this is the east view, as you can see, looking back to the road. So, the applicant's business is just sitting there to the right, so it would just be an office for the, for the use that you see here. So, as we said, staff had recommended denial of the CP as it was put out on the application. We took this to the planning board with the written request. By our process, the, our process does allow for the board to make recommendations for more restrictive zoning districts, so that's what happened in this particular circumstance. It went to the planning board, and they had recommended by a seven-to-zero vote to deny the CP, but to recommend the ONIP by a seven-to-zero unanimous... the CP, but to recommend the ONIP by a seven to zero unanimous vote at the last planning board meeting.
Are there any questions? If not, I will open the public hearing. Are there any speakers?
We have one speaker in favor, Mr. Rudy McMillan.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Rudolph McMillan, Jr. I reside at 529 Hollins Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm the owner of Majestic Mobility. I've been in the business here in Cumberland County since 1994. I've conducted business with multiple county agencies. I used to be Spring Lake Transit. I did LifeLink for the Cumberland County Health System, Cumberland County Schools. I do, I did Cumberland County Transportation for senior adults. I now also do Medicaid, Medicare runs all over the state, North Carolina. I'm passionate about what I do because I do things right. That's how I've been able to be in the business since 1994. What happened, I want you to understand this. I own the land that's beside this specific property.
Which land, which piece?
Where it says C3.
Yeah, you own that?
All of that, already own.
Okay.
Now, the home that you saw earlier that had the budget truck, that was owned by the Pittmans. Mrs. and Mrs. Pittman came to me and said, Rudy, there's a car lot that wants to come and buy this particular piece of property. As you said, it's off-road, off-road, which means something's going on, okay? So to do the integrity of the community, I bought this piece of property. The property, please note, served as the office for the Cumberland County Fire Association. It's not a house. It's an office building that was on this R6. I try to do things right, so when I buy the piece of property, I want it to be zoned correctly. When I went to the county, I don't know anything about zoning. I asked him. I said, what do I need to zone this ass? And the man told me CP. One week prior to the planning board meeting, I was told that it was going to be denied. I need to go to something else. And that's when I asked for OI. I just want it to be done right. That's all I'm asking for. Only thing that's going to be done is it's still going to be an office building. It's just a, it's an investment piece of property. As it was before, just instead of R6, having an OI, that's all I need. As I said, I just want to upkeep the integrity of the community. Same thing I've been doing since 1994. That's all I've asked for you. I appreciate your service to the community, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
There are no further speakers.
Then I'll close the public hearing, and call on Commissioner Stewart.
In case, zoning case 22-0050, I move to deny the rezoning request from R6 Residential District to CP Plan Commercial District and approve rezoning to the ONI Office and Institutional District. The Board finds the ONI designation is consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Area Land Use Plan, which calls for mixed-use development at this location, and is reasonable and in the public interest as this district is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Second. Anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor?
That is unanimous.
Thank you. That will take us to 2251 zoning case.
All right, Commissioners, moving on. As you can see by the highlighted area, this tract sits just south of Hope Mills, close to the I-95 business, as you can see with the star that's indicated on the map. The applicant is Marcus Gregory McLean and Robert G. McLean. The request is to go from A1 Agricultural to RR Residential District. The intent is to put a home on the site for about just a little over a half acre. So, this is I-95, and you'll see in the upcoming pictures and the colorized map exactly what this is, but the tract in question is highlighted amongst this set of subdivided properties here along State Road. And you can see that backs up to the I-95 interchange with 301. Out in this area, you have primarily single-family homes. You do have some manufactured homes that sit more off along Skipper Rock Lane, but for the most part, this area is single-family homes, or a single-family home area. So, again, so the request, you have basically A1 and RR in the entire area out here, so it's not without precedent that you don't see RR zoning designations. You can see it up here to the northeast, and you can see it across here, and you can see it to the southwest here as well. So, there's no water and sewer out here. There's some slight hydroic soils, as you can see, sitting towards the end of State Road. The South Central Cumberland Land Use Plan designates this as low-density residential. So, much like the other case that we heard just previously, it's not compliant with our plan, because the plan actually calls for denser lots to be out here than what they are proposing to do. It also has a recommendation that it should only have stick-built homes should be permitted in this classification. So as such, the reason why you see it's not consistent with the adopted land use plan is because what is being proposed are actually larger lot sizes than what the plan is contemplating. So if approved, then the plan would automatically change per state statutes, and staff would do that on our end.
The plan would change?
That lot would change back to, actually, it would probably go to suburban density residential, which is addressed right across the street there, out across the interstate. This is the subject property. You can see there are homes on the left and right, you'll see here, but the home is currently vacant, or the property is currently vacant. This is looking south on State Road. As you can see, the zoning side, you can see there's a single-family homes that are out there. This is looking west on State Road, looking across the street. You can see that's I-95. This is north, with the property immediately on the right-hand side. Staff had recommended approval of the request when we went to the planning board. They also recommended approval of the request of RR by seven to zero vote. There were some concerns about the ability to be able to put mobile homes on this particular piece of property, so the reason it's going to this type of designation is that it's been indicated to us, if you notice, the site is only just a little over a half acre. So the owner wanted to put a home on this site. The setbacks and everything that would be associated with the A1 district as compared to RR would be fairly restrictive of where they could put it on the site and so forth, because as I noted before, the RR designation is a 20,000-square-foot minimum lot size, and they have pretty much the half acre right now as it stands. So there was also some concerns about the ability to put a mobile home, but you can put a mobile home on A1 and RR right now anyway. So that was part of the discussion at the planning board meeting. So again, staff had recommended approval, and when it went to the planning board, they had recommended approval as well.
Commissioner Keith?
Okay, so, explain again. Every house, every lot in this line of six neighbors are A1, and all of a sudden, right in the middle of this, somebody wants to put RR, which is going to really take away the integrity of the whole area. So, explain to me again why they want RR as opposed to, what can you do on RR that you can't do on A1?
I would say they're fairly similar. I don't, like
What's the reason behind going to RR, then?
It would be the setbacks that would allow them to be able to do something on a small site. So A1 contemplates two-acre minimum lot sizes.
Right. Every one of these on that line are like half acre.
And they would be subject to the A1 setbacks if they had to come in and to expand. A lot of those homes, it's my understanding, has been there since probably the 60s.
There's a lot of out parcels on some of these homes that are right up on the line, that I'm sure that if something happened to the out parcel, they wouldn't be able to rebuild it at that line.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, so like, if they burned, they would, you know, they would be subject to the same setbacks that the A1, they'd be in this situation where they'd have to come in and rezon if they wanted the flexibility to put something on their lot, in other words.
I mean, I obviously don't know any of the people living, I don't know any of the people living there, but you'd have to really convince me to take away, to put a different zoning in the middle of all the neighbors that have the same zoning. And I just don't, I don't understand why exactly they want to do that.
They can't get a building permit.
They can't get a building on A1?
On A1, so they're asking for RR so that they can bring in a performance with this stuff.
Wait a minute, you need to get up and talk to the market. Either one of you
Because that makes sense, it makes, okay. So, right now, to your point, for those of you listening, it was because it's A1 right now, and the lot is a half acre, they can't get a building permit. So, it is the policy, because this is a vacant lot, that there is no way they could build anything on this piece of property unless we change the zoning.
I would say that's correct.
That is correct, then. That is.
Under the A1.
Yes. So without us changing it, that's going to be a vacant piece of property forever. Okay, that makes more sense.
But, unless he what?
Unless they purchase additional abutting land.
Next to it, yeah. What I didn't get is, you said if we rezon it, it changes across the street. Go back to that for me.
So the plan designation calls for it to be, okay, so the existing plan for low-density residential
Low-density, right.
Contemplates that there's actually more intensive and more denser type of lots out there. The suburban density residential would put it back into more of the half-acre to acre lots, or the larger lots, that really, if you really look at this, all of the lots in that area, it could be all suburban density residential based off the lot sizes that they have there. But if somebody wanted to come in and say, for example, subdivide those lots and put 2.2 units or up to six units per acre, it would be plan-compliant when we went through the process to make our recommendation. But as they stand right now, a lot of those lots right there, they would really fall more in the suburban density residential category.
But the question, though, was if we rezon this, then it becomes, it changes the plan, the land use plan, which this whole area went through a whole land use plan. They met with a bunch of people, everybody in the community, for it to be like this, and with one vote, we changed the whole, the whole plan, right here.
You changed that one lot, and that's a statutory requirement.
That one lot of, everything on that side.
That one lot, because that's all we're talking about at this hearing.
That's why you make the motion, that it says you're amending the plan.
Right.
It's for that one lot, though. Commissioner Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, I think the larger question that goes about here is every one of those lots are in noncompliance right now, that if there was, if any of those houses got flooded, fire, anything else, that homeowner could not build on those pieces of property any longer. They have totally lost their ability on ownership of that piece of property, as it sits right now. So, I think it should all be RR.
So at some point, we start the domino effect.
Well, you've got to protect the area, because we put in zoning that makes everybody out of compliance. They are, correct? They are out of compliance.
I would say so.
Yeah, only grandfather did.
Grandfather did, yeah, because when it came. All right. Anybody else have any questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any speakers?
We have no speakers in favor. Three speakers in opposition. Our first speaker in opposition is Angela Griffin.
Ms. Griffin. Did you sign up, sir? Just yes or no?
No, I didn't. I went out, I had to work late.
Then you had, okay. Just have a seat, please.
Good evening. My name is Angela Griffin. I live at 302 Sawgrass Court in Meban, North Carolina. To the members of this board, thank you for allowing us to appeal to you concerning this very important zoning issue of this small partial of land. It is located next to our childhood home. It is passionately vital to us. In addition to our mother, all of the neighborhood residents along this one street neighborhood have resided there since 1969, and even more so surprising in this day and time of numerous and frantic relocations, they are all original owners. A tight-knit group who has aged, raised their children there, and currently all retired and many widowed, their homesteads are their most valued assets. To rezon this lot as residential, and now hearing what I just heard with A1, we are concerned, and we want to make sure that manufactured homes are not allowed to be built there to undermine the current values of the home and the land. After 50 years of maintaining and residing in these stick-built constructed homes, they have added considerably to the square footage and landscaping. Ranging from ages 70 to 80, the current residents are no longer able to add considerably to their incomes. The most are fixed. It is unlikely that they will be able to recoup the financial loss of the value in their personal homes. The reality for them is those values would be significantly decreased in the addition of a manufactured home on this current spot. That would be the first and only manufactured home if that is allowed. So our point of concern would be the ability for any potential new residents on this lot meeting the laws and regulations of our county ordinances to meet distance easement, sewer requirements, and spacing between the neighboring homes. Please take our very real concerns, and please determine that rezoning this lot without a condition to not allow manufactured homes, especially if the resident is not required to be equal or comparable to the existing neighborhood homes. It is not beneficial to its long-term residents and the neighbors. I did bring some pictures of some of the houses that are there, because all of the homes there are brick homes. You know, our concern is that we would not want manufactured homes to be brought there. In hearing that, I guess if it is approved, that everyone is rezoned to RR to make sure that if something did happen, that everybody can rebuild on that lot. But just making sure that it's, you know, the house that comes there is along the lines of what is currently there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Our second speaker in opposition is Mr. Gary McLean.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I too live at the home, this is my mother here, and we are definitely concerned of the manufacturing of homes, and the more I have heard everyone, we're, this is a septic area. Just from a structural standpoint, there, we have already have had multiple problems with very decreased water pressure, and bringing in possible two manufactured homes could and would greatly decrease that. We've been fighting that since we've been there. We always know from any drought time, any area of that, to where our water pressure decreases, and to put those homes in there, someone would have to come in and put in that septic area. And to come in and have those manufactured homes, it's no different than no one would come there and put in a $500,000 home, because our area would depreciate their home. So we don't want manufactured homes to come in and depreciate what we have. We've been there that long, and we've maintained it for that long, and anyone has the right to own it, obviously, but we're not looking for them to just to come in and be able to do that. This is a retired community, and to come in to do that would greatly upset the area, and it would just put, even with the growth of the area that has been going on now, we've noticed some negative change ever since then, and we're just looking to have it, to maintain. It's always been a guarded area. Everyone there knows each other. We look out for each other, and to have someone come in and do that, whoever owns the land right now, from my understanding, he has other areas, and the manufactured homes on the area are just not up kept. Even the lot, since it's been purchased, has grown up. It's outgrowing, it's grown up weeds and everything in there now, but we're just not looking to have that come in, to have that type of home there moving forward.
Thank you. There are next?
Our final speaker in opposition is Ms. Ann Ferguson.
Bless you.
Good evening.
I am Ann Ferguson, and I reside at 5865 State Road, Hope Mills. I currently resides in the home next door to the lot that's spoken of. in the home next door to the lot that's spoken of. And I am in full agreement with what my kids just said, that I am in opposition of anything other than putting in something that's compatible with the homes that's there, mine as well as the others. Like I said, I've been there since 69, the early part of 69, and I've just never had a neighbor there on that side. And I prefer it stayed that way. But I know, I, I, I can't say that. I do not oppose to a neighbor, but I would prefer them come in with a home that's compatible to mine. That's my main concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And in the, please sit down, sir. Please sit down, sir, let me finish, if you don't mind. Okay? Please sit down and let me finish, because I'm gonna give you an opportunity to speak if you don't try to interrupt me. Okay? Because I do understand that people do have a time, that they can't get here because of that, to be able to sign up. So I was gonna give you an opportunity to speak, not before the people who signed up, because they got here on time. So I'm gonna let you come up and have your, now, your three minutes. All right, but you can't stand up and interrupt in my meeting. Okay? All right, so come right on up.
Good evening. My name is Greg McLean. I'm representing my son Marcus. The Ferguson's, they've all been our neighbors my entire life. I've lived there since 1955.
Over here?
Yeah. I live on 6141 Braxton Road, which is all a continuous road. And like Ms. Ferguson has said, we're all a tight-knit bunch. I promise, I bought the lot from one of our fellow neighbors. It's been a guarded spot for many, many years. These houses, Mr. Jim Hodge bought this land way back probably in the late 50s and broke it up into lots and sold it to the families that live there now. It's all of our homes. It's my home. And the last thing I would do, Ms. Ferguson, is put a modular home beside you. Okay? You can take that to the bank. All right? We'll leave grapevines on it before we do that. This is my home, and the gentleman that was interested in buying the lot is actually a general contractor, and this is his home also on Braxton Road. And he told me he was planning on building a home for his father. Okay? The reason this is asking for rezoning, because this A1, my property, or my son's property, has been A1 for, since the late 60s, or maybe mid 60s. And due to changes in the zoning ordinance, we was in non-compliance. So if you went to get a building permit,
Right.
you can't, you can't build anything on it. Since I made this request, the planning board and those folks did a lot of research, a lot of history, and come to find out that it's not, it is, it's not in non-compliance right now, due to the date that it was originally cut out track. So actually, if I wanted to put a modular home on there, if I had any intention to put a modular home on there, I could do it right now with A1 legally. But we're trying to get it RR, because that will be the proper zoning, even though the other houses there are out of compliance. But I just want to make sure, if you guys deny this, this is fine, but no matter what, there will not be a modular home going in on that lot, okay? I bet you can take that to the bank. I promise you that, as a neighbor. But I had no intentions of that. But anyway, I hope you guys will consider it. We sort of got caught up in this. I was surprised that I couldn't, because I own property that's A1 and have houses on it.
Let me ask you a question, though, then. Would you be amenable to some conditional zoning? I think that's what, Commissioner Keith, I think that's where he was going, which would protect everybody.
Mr. McLean, can you, are you a decision-maker on this property? Are you the owner of this property?
I'm my son's representative.
But your son owns it?
Yes.
He's the dad.
He won't be putting modular home on it. This is our home.
I, I know, but, you know, the banks aren't what they used to be. So, there, we've got a situation here. You've got a piece of property that you can't build on, you can't get a permit on because of its zoning. Now, if we give RR zoning, it allows you to put a, a dwelling on there, but our conditional use that we're talking about is there will absolutely be no ability to put a modular home on there or anything.
I don't, I don't want a modular home.
Hold on, Mr., hold on. But if we pass this, that's part of the condition.
Right.
That you could never put a modular home.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, but, but does your son?
I'm sure, I, if he doesn't, I, I would say yes. He sent me up here, okay?
The only reason I ask is because you were talking about selling it to somebody else, that's why.
Right, right.
We would need the conditional zoning. It's still your, your son's property.
Right.
But that prevents everybody from, from doing that. And I think that, and that's what you say, and that's what protects them.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I would, before we would put a modular home there, we would let it sit vacant from now till eternity.
But if you sell it, the other person may not, so.
If this zoning goes with the property.
Right.
That's right. I understand that. I understand that.
All right.
The only reason I asked for RR was to be in compliance.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you. And, and, you know, that's very kind of you to, to say that, but I, I still have a little concern, because we're talking about the son. This is the son's property. And I know daddy rules sometimes. I know that. But I think-
We're, we're partners.
But what's we do with this stuff?
But, but.
Doesn't matter what the son say, that's what it's on.
Ms. Commissioner, I think-
Really, really and truly, right now, if you leave it A1,
He could put a modular home.
I could put a modular home on it. Okay?
This, 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 this.
I mean, either way, I, we could, we could put a modular home on it.
Right.
We're not going to.
Right, I understand.
I tell you what, we're gonna try to work this out with the attorney here.
You said you were representing your son. Do you have the authority to make a decision on, on a conditional zoning?
Well, it's not in writing.
Well, I mean, would you have, just tell, just tell the board.
Yes, I do.
All right, yes.
I submitted the paperwork originally, and-
Do you consent then to a zoning for a, a, or conditional zoning prohibiting the location of a modular or manufactured home on the property?
Yeah, that's their problem.
You're on the official record now.
He said they were partners. So we know who's, uh.
And he did the paperwork.
Yeah, he did the paperwork.
He represents, he has the authority to do it.
And he has the authority to do it. So, Mr. Keith, is that your motion?
Uh, if we, did you close the public hearing?
Oh, and close the public hearing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We okay?
Y'all good? Okay. Everybody's good. Everybody's good.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning request from A1 Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential District, and find the request is consistent, is, we find the request is not consistent with the South Central Land Use Plan, but is in harmony with the character of the surrounding area, and is reasonable in the public interest, because it will allow the owner to build on the property with the condition of no manufactured or modular homes to be, conditional use of modular or manufactured homes to be built on the property.
RR CZ zoning.
RR CZ zoning.
Right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
That is unanimous.
All righty. All right.
Thank you guys. Don't let anything happen to your house on A1 over there.
We probably need to talk to all of them. This takes us. That takes us to zoning case 2252. Don't keep me like the city council here tonight.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. This is case ZON 220052. As you can see by the highlighted star, this property sits on the, more, there, sits on the, in the central part of the county, just east of Fayetteville, along Clinton Road and Highway 24. So the applicant owner is Carolyn Steve and Larry Strawbridge, Tracy Roberts, Wesley Carroll, and Gary Futch. The request is to go from RR CZ District Conditional Zoning to R6A Residential District. The intent is to put a manufactured home park. This, this case is coming back to us after being approved, going in the opposite direction. It was actually approved to go to this, to the RR from R6A back in 2019. The applicant is wishing to put it back originally to where it was before that rezoning action in 2019. So this, the acreage itself is about seven and a half acres. You can see this is the highlighted tract you can see sitting pretty much surrounded by R6A off of Downing Road. Here's Clinton Road, that you can see here. You'll see an aerial photo here in just a second to see what all this looks like. For the most part, everything that's surrounding this property is vacant land. You do have some commercial operations. You have a, the New South River Baptist Association across the street. You have a church out here towards Clinton Road. But for the most part, this is an older subdivision that was really never completed. You can see there are no streets, but it's been platted. It sits kind of right here in the middle of it. So this is the zoning that you can see, RR CZ. As I stated before, it's kind of surrounded by R6A all around it, so this would put it back into the R6A designation, which would make it more homogeneous for this entire area. There is water and sewer out in this particular area off of Downing Road. There's, does have some hydroic and hydroic inclusion soils, but it does have water and sewer availability for the site. This is subject to the Vander Land Use Plan. This is rural, which designates it as Rural Residential Associated Districts, RR20, RR, R20A, R30, and R30A. You can see the various minimum square footages, about 20,000 square feet. So the request, much like the things that we've heard, or the other cases that we've heard this evening, is not consistent with that plan. But we've put that in the motion in order that if you decide to approve this request, that the motion would reflect the ability to be able to do that, to change the plan as well. This is the subject property in question. See, right now, just pretty much vacant wooded. This is looking west on Downing Road, with the property immediately on the left-hand side. This is standing on the property, looking at the Baptist Association right across the street. And this is the east view with the property and the zoning sign, as you can see, on the immediate right-hand side of the road. So staff had recommended denial of the request. As it was applied for, when we took it to the planning board, they had recommended approval of the request, going by a seven to zero vote, which was unanimous, to put the zoning back to where it was prior to 2019. So if you have any other questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Anybody got any questions? Commissioner Keith.
All right. You got R6 all the way around this thing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Not developed, though. Not developed.
Correct.
Do you know the ownership of the areas around it?
You mean the actual owners?
Yes.
Yeah.
R6A is the same owner as you.
Yeah, right. It's the same owner from every piece of that purple into the, the green. Why, why, what's going on here? I mean, why, why are they trying to get RR CZ in the middle of R6, and they own all the property?
Back in 2019, they had, they had a manufactured home park. I think they were trying to change it to an RV park by changing it to RR. I think there was something dealing with housing for a number of workers that were so, you know, for the roads out there. The RV park did, plans apparently fell through, so now they want to put it back to R6A so they can market it again for manufactured housing.
So they're trying to get the whole property, R6A?
The one in question that's highlighted in blue. Yes, sir.
So they went to one, they came in, asked it to be rezoned, that fell through, now they're asking to go back?
That's correct.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any speakers?
We have one speaker this evening. Our first speaker in favor is Gary Futch.
I'm not nervous at all. My name is Gary Futch. I live in Fayetteville, 2538 North Edgewater Drive, 28303. I represent the owners of this property. It was originally R6A, of course, and we had some people approach us from the natural gas pipeline. Basically, they were gonna bring in, they were gonna bring in an RV park for all the workers. And basically, they went through the conditional rezoning process, and it did fall through. We do happen to have someone that's looking at the property currently. They are with Timeout Communities, and they plan to, and these are actually dirt roads, and basically, for anybody to put a manufactured home park there, they're gonna have to bring it up today, today's code. So they're gonna put in new streets, they're gonna put in streetlights, and all the, all the things that are needed to go through the current zoning of, of a manufactured home park. When I first met the sellers, they had about 30 homes out there, and we have slowly been getting these homes off, just because they were from the 70s and 80s and weren't really well-maintained. Timeout Communities has a partnership with Clayton Homes, and there's gonna be 2000, 2023 to 2024 home, year homes out there. I'm sorry. So they're gonna be brand-new manufactured homes, yeah. They're gonna be brand-new manufactured homes. And with that, we are in need of affordable housing. Rents are increasing everywhere, and some people are having a harder time finding places to live and still being a part of this community. So we'll provide affordable housing for the area.
Thank you. Then I'll close the public hearing. Is there water and sewer out here?
Yes, there is.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, I'll take a, a motion. Commissioner Keith?
Yes, sir, thank you.
You'll need a piece of wet napkin.
All right. So in the case of zoning 22-0052, I move to approve the rezoning request from RR CZ Rural Residential Conditional Zoning to R6A Residential District, and find the request is not consistent with the Vander Area Land Use Plan, which calls for suburban density residential dislocation. However, the board finds that the request is an amendment to the adopted current Vander Land Use Plan, and the Board of Conditioners should not require any additional request or application for the amendment to said map. We will assign the parcel back to the zoning designation at the time of the plan's adoption, and it is reasonable in the public interest, because the uses allowed in R6A Residential District would be compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land-using activities and zoning.
I can get a second?
Second.
Been moved to second. All those in favor?
That is unanimous.
All right. Thank you. That takes care of all our zoning cases. That would take us to the number five. However, we're gonna take a small break for about five minutes, and we'll come right back. Thanks, everybody, and we will come back into session. Ooh, we needed that break. So we're gonna go now to items of business. Well, the first item is the report on the National Flood Insurance Program, and I will go to Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would recognize Mr. Jermaine Walker to present this item, please.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
As a part of the, the county's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, and a part of the community rating system, it's a requirement that as a part of our annual recertification, that we're required to provide an update to the governing board for the, the recent recertification we've gone through for calendar year, August 21st, August 1st, excuse me, 2021 to August 1st, 2022. And the, the county's participation in this program is what allows us to, our residents, to receive a 10% discount on their flood insurance premiums. And so, staff is requesting that the, the board receive the report for this calendar year, 2021 to 2022.
All right. Anybody have any questions, comments? If not, I'll take a motion to receive the report for 21-
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those- It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, our next item is consideration of the partial, uh, certification of Section Two of the Norcross Permit of the I ninety-five widening project.
Mr. Walker.
So as a part of the, the widening of this portion of, uh, I ninety-five to eight lanes, uh, the, the project required relocation and adjustment of, uh, specific Norcrest-owned sewer lines within the NC DOT right-of-way. Uh, all work is completely funded by NC DOT.
Okay, that was my question.
All work is funded by NC DOT, and we're requesting, uh, partial certification, uh, of, uh, Section Two, uh, and that the permit be signed, uh, in, in order to put that part of the sewer pipe into service. And, and we're asking that this would be accepted by the Board of Commissioners and also the Norcrest Governing Board.
Is there, uh, anybody have any questions? If not, I would take a motion for the consideration of the partial certification of Section Two.
Somebody moved it.
Uh, Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Council, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walker. And I will recognize Ms. Irene Graham, who is, uh, Library Board of Trustees. Thank you for being here. Uh, and that will take us to, um, the consideration, because she ready to jump up there too, of the recommended uses of the opioid settlement, uh, based upon, uh, community engagement. Uh, Dr. Jennifer Green.
Right. Good evening, Commissioners. Get our PowerPoint up and going.
How we got all night?
Oh, no, Danny.
Uh, Danny. You need Danny?
I do.
Okay, come on up. Oh. Oh, they gotta switch it over.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
There we go. All right, so a few of these slides you've already seen, so I will, in the interest of time, make sure I hit the highlights. Um, of course, you all know about the $26 billion opioid settlement. The county has received our, um, the total amount for the spring and summer payments out of our total seven, almost 17 million, um, dollars over 18 years is about 1.7, almost 1.8 million dollars. So those, those first two payments are what we're, uh, before you tonight to consider, um, is the use of those first two spring and summer payments. In addition, uh, the city of Fayetteville is getting an additional nearly $2 million over an 18-year period. So as you know, the, uh, the MOA with the state offers two options, Option A and Option B. And you, as a local government, will approve the amount of funds for each strategy. So that is what we're asking for tonight, is approval of a recommendation on the use of funds for those strategies. Um, Option A strategies are those that are from a shorter list of evidence-based, high-impact strategies. And Option B, we can consider those strategies after you go through a, a, a longer strategic planning process. We have met, um, some, but all, not all of the requirements for the Option B. Uh, so I'll just, you've seen these before, but because we're gonna go through these more in detail this evening, these are the 12 strategies that you can fund under Option A, uh, Strategic Planning, Evidence-Based Addiction Treatment. And I'll make a note about this one. This requires that it, if we fund this, it, um, has to meet the requirements from, uh, it has to meet national standards for evidence-based addiction treatment. So there's a specific definition about what that means. Um, Recovery Support Services and Housing, Employment-Related Services, Early Intervention, which will, again, um, there's a specific definition of early intervention. Um, early intervention does not necessarily mean prevention. Um, early intervention has a specific de- definition related to youth mental health first aid, intervening early for those that are already, um, have some level of, um, interaction with either, um, some type of drug, drug use already. Um, naloxone distribution, post-overdose response, uh, syringe service, criminal justice diversion programs, addiction treatment for incarcerated persons. And again, that has to be evidence-based addiction treatment, and then reentry programs as well. Um, these are Option B strategies. So if we, uh, and by we, I mean the Commissioners, um, if the Commissioners would like to select something from this category, uh, these categories, including, um, other types of, uh, treatment for opioid use, um, connecting people for training or research, or, uh, preventing over prescribing, that requires an Option B selection. And again, we have met some, but not all of the requirements to use Option B. So, uh, as you know, we've undergone a community feedback process, uh, from, over the course of the summer. So from May to July, we did that. We did four community meetings in Fayetteville, Spring Lake, Eastover, and Hope Mills. We also did an online community survey and then also received written feedback from community members. Uh, we notably, uh, we asked three important questions. What strategies are currently being implemented already? Um, what specific programs are being implemented and who's doing that? And where is there an opportunity for alignment of strategies? And then importantly, we ask, uh, ask people to prioritize strategies. I'm gonna grab some water. Uh, when you talk fast, you have to drink water. Um, so here's where we got, um, some community stakeholder meetings from. And, um, I'm gonna do a little bit of, sorry, I have not eaten dinner yet. Okay. Um, so due to the dynamic of some of the meetings, um, all of the stakeholder meetings were prioritized differently. Um, or all of the pri- all, during each of the stakeholder meetings, they prioritized the strategies differently. Um, in these key stakeholder meetings, nearly, in all of them, um, Recovery Support Services and Housing were identified as priorities in nearly all of the meetings. Uh, and we noted, uh, the importance of early intervention in nearly all of the meetings, um, but that early intervention coupled with addiction treatment and other services. Um, also, although not prioritized in the top three for most of these meetings, Narcan was identified as really critical to a, uh, was identified as a really critical strategy. Um, okay, so here are the results from our community meetings. Uh, we did some ranking and prioritizing during our community meetings. Uh, the top three priorities that were selected were addiction treatment for incarcerated persons, early intervention programs, and Recovery Support Services and Housing. We also, here are the results from our community survey. Um, the, the respondents were able to rank their top three strategies. Uh, as their first choice, most respondents selected evidence-based addiction treatment, Recovery Support Services and Housing, and early intervention. Uh, we got some great ideas from community meetings, and those included enhancing smart recovery groups that exist in Cumberland County already, implementing collegiate recovery and recovery high schools, um, implementing opioid court, enhancing our post-overdose response teams, implementing a military liaison of some sort that would collaborate specifically with Fort Bragg, uh, making sure we have transportation to services, uh, securing space to exam, expand the local options for, uh, not just treatment, but detox as well, um, transitional housing, and then a recovery community center. Um, uh, community members also highlighted the need for data sharing, um, and then also enhanced communicate, uh, coordination with the criminal justice system. And then in the early intervention category, um, youth mental health first aid. So a couple of key themes, it was really hard to kind of digest all of the feedback, um, into a few options, but here are some of the key themes. Um, nearly all of the Option A categories or strategies are being currently implemented in Cumberland County, but they need more capacity. They need more staff, they need more time, and they need more funding. Um, the only strategy that was not being implemented was in the Cumberland, was MAT or Evidence-Based Addiction Treatment in, uh, Cumberland County Detention Center. It...
MAT, they were on the way.
Oh, I'm sorry, medication-assisted treatment, so that might be, yep. Yep. Um, and then importantly, uh, community members noted the need for communication and coordination of services, not just beyond making a referral, right? We can make a referral between Agency A and Agency B, but making sure that we coordinate at the organizational level, making sure that we connect people to services. And one model that was repeatedly noted was an idea of a recovery community. So co-located services, all in one location, um, and that these, uh, should be multi-sector. Um, and then we, people also noted that residents need to leave the area for treatment, uh, and that transitional housing was really critical for the success. So we can put in all the other tools and resources, we can put in treatment, we can put in, um, a- all of these other options, but we need housing to be able to, um, for people to be successful. Uh, the other piece, uh, that we heard was that in order to make progress, we need services along the continuum of care. So we can't just fund recovery, we can't just fund treatment, we can't just fund, uh, prevention. We need to cut, uh, fund programs along the continuum and that there's more than one pathway to recovery. Um, in most, but not all of our sessions, uh, MAT was seen as integral to recovery. Um, and then also, we noted that, uh, involvement of the criminal justice system was really important. Okay, I'm gonna, uh, shift to our recommendations, and I might, Ashley, I might need you to come up and, uh, help me with this one. Um, we noted that for the spring and summer payments, we again have, um, a million, almost 1.7, almost 1.8 million dollars. Um, it's required that we do a local spending authorization report within 90 days of the budget resolution. The budget resolution was passed on May fifteenth. Um, and so that puts our deadline tomorrow to submit this report. And Ashley, I'm gonna take a seat just for a minute, if you can help me, uh, with our recommendations.
Yep. Um, so one of our recommendations is to utilize $800,000 in the spring and summer that you already received. Um, this would go to several strategies. Strategy six, which is early intervention. Uh, strategy two, which is evidence-based addiction treatment. Um, and then, um, as you can see, programs that support people in treatment and recovery kind of cover several strategies within the Option A category. We would like to, uh, recommend funding at least one project in one of those areas. The next recommendation would be to allocate, um, 10,000 to 70,000 dollars to purchase Narcan. And the reason for this is there's an organization that will match funding for up to three years. Um, and so we can, uh, get out a lot of Narcan kits in that, in that capacity. The last recommendation, um, would be a $200,000 pilot project within the jail setting to do, uh, Medicaid-assisted treatment. Um, so this would be the MAT within the jail setting. We learned from the sheriff and the jail, um, that there isn't, um, a strategy regarding MAT. Um, so this would be a pilot project to see if that's something that would work in the jail setting. And I should've said the $800,000 in the first recommendation would be an RFP process for community organizations to be able to, um, bid for that money to do those treatment services within those strategies. Um, the last recommendation, which is a lofty one, um, is to, uh, explore options to construct or lease a physical space, um, for that recovery center that Dr. Green mentioned, which would be multi-sector, bringing different, um, organizations together under one roof. Um, that was something that was noted several times. So that way, um, people can go to one place and get several services at once. Um, transportation is an issue in the county, um, and so that was something that was mentioned several times, um, in our process.
Um, I'll note a couple of things, um, thank you, Ashley, for helping me there. Um, so the residential substance use facility, the MOU dictates that if we fund that, it must be for evidence-based addiction treatment. So it can't be for anything else that's not, um, and that is the only strategy that we can use capital expenditures on. So you can't, um, build a recovery center, um, we can't just say we're gonna build a recovery center. The, um, the residential substance abuse must be evidence-based, and that is the only strategy in which we can use capital expenditures on. These other strategies, we're gonna have to leverage other funding opportunities to figure out, we can maybe fund the program, but we can't fund the building or the leased space, um, if that makes sense. Um, and then we, I wanna go back to one other, um, note on the recommendation, that if we do do recommendation two, um, it does require a commitment from the county to do at least, uh, to fund, continue their funding commitment of at least 75% for the next 18 years. But that is, um, but you leverage additional dollars now, right? So if we put in $10,000 now, it requires, um, $7,500 funding in future years, um, and for the, for those strategies. Uh, but you can, uh, match those funds currently for the next three years. So I'm gonna pause there, because we went through the recommendations kind of quickly, and I apologize for putting Ashley on the spot there.
Uh, Commissioner Booth.
Thank you. On the Narcan, 10 to 70,000 range? If we say 10, we have to do a minimum of 75. We're not bound to this 7,500 volunteer, right?
Correct, um, so...
We can't do 70 and then do 20, the volunteer.
That's correct. Uh, for the matching strategy. So that's from vital strategies. They will do, um, match up, they will match up to $70,000, so that's the reason for that dollar range. You have to commit at least 70,000, uh, at least $10,000, and it will fund up to $70,000, yes. Um, thank you. Um, and they'll fund up to at least $70,000, um, if we commit to the 75% in- initial investment.
Commissioner Keith?
Um, thank you, Jennifer. Um, I got a couple of questions.
Yes.
As you know.
Yes.
First of all, you know, I'm a big fan, appreciate everything you're doing, but I, I've got some real concerns about, and you know this throughout C four and what we're doing and getting the ball rolling. I got a couple of questions about this, 'cause right now, I'm, I'm more of a fan of Option B than I am of A, because I think A hasn't proven itself successful, B gives us more flexibility to, to do things. So what specific programs do we have right now? Who's doing them? What are they doing to fight opioid addiction in Cumberland County?
Yeah. So we, that's a, a lot, I think I'm gonna try to give you the, uh, not the brief answer, but the answer that's not gonna be the full answer, not having, I mean, I think we could have a full presentation. So when we went, that was a question that we asked in all of the community sessions about what strategies are we doing? So we have evidence-based addiction treatment, um, in our community. There are several providers in our community. You've heard from, um, a, a couple, um, that do evidence-based addiction treatment. They provide MAT in the community. One of the challenges there is that we don't have enough of that money for those that are uninsured.
Okay, if I can stop you, because this is where, this is where I get a little confused.
Yes.
Are these recovery programs? And what kind of success are we having in recovery? Because everyone knows if opioid addiction was easy to recover from, a lot more people would recover from it. But I, I wanna know if, if these are education, um, prevention, uh, recovery, treatment, and then recovery. You know, or are they just sort of keeping everybody on hospice and just making sure that they're, you know, not killing themselves with opioid addiction? Um, wh- what do, what does that, what does that look like? What does treatment look like in Cumberland County?
Yeah, so I think right now it looks fragmented. Um, so people can be on, um, some type of MAT, um, and I'm, and, um, and you've heard the folks from Myo Veris this evening during the public comment period. So we have treatment options. I think where we, um, lack is, what we found from the community meetings, is this coordination. So if I get somebody on treatment and I, um, and, but they don't have a place to live, then they go back into the same community in which they were already living in, and there's, that's an opportunity to relapse. Or maybe I'm on treatment, but I don't have the job skills. So we don't have, and maybe we do have a job program, but those two pieces are not talking to each other. So, or then maybe I have a, um, I'm on MAT, but then I don't have, um, an early enter, um, naloxone or post-overdose response team to come assist me when I, when I relapse. So we don't have the pieces that are, get put together, because we don't have the funding capacity. Uh, we don't have the, um, the amount of funding that's needed to fully support the programs in the way that they need to be. So we're sort of piecing the, um, we're sort of piecing it all together, and our criminal justice system doesn't necessarily, um, have, for example, I use the example of an opioid court, but so if somebody starts in our criminal justice system and then maybe they get incarcerated... But so, if somebody starts in our criminal justice system and then maybe they get incarcerated and then they get put back out on the street, we have no Narcan for that person. And we have Narcan, but maybe it's not accessible to that person and so, they overdose and our post-overdose response team is like three people. And I think one of those people is part-time. And so, there's nobody to kind of catch them if they do have an overdose. So, we have pieces, we just don't have the pieces put together.
And Jennifer, I think you recognize what the concern is, is we don't have a lockdown, a lockdown plan that shows success, 'cause maybe nobody knows. When, when you say housing, are we talking about like treatment, how, you know, like a rehab center where people are living? Or are we just talking about a place where they can recover on their own? Because an addict's an addict and if you give them freedom, they're gonna go out and, and get what they need to get. So, I mean, are, when you say housing, are these, you know, dwellings?
Both and. So, the RFP or the MOA allows for a couple of things. So, you can pay for rent or lease or utilities for people that are in recovery or in, in treatment. There also exists in lots of places, including a few in Cumberland County, where you can fund, you can go sort of a step-down program, you can go and live in a place like an Oxford House where you are in recovery and you can live there for a set period of time and you can get assistance in sort of these wraparound services. So, I live there, I have maybe a requirement for a job, I have a requirement to be in some outpatient treatment. And then, for example, we had somebody last week that they were in that transition period, they're getting ready to go to treatment, but there was a week delay. So, they needed a place to go for that one week before they could go get treatment, because they were homeless. So, we needed somebody, and somebody was gonna go check on that person every day to make sure that they were okay, but we needed a place for that person to be for one week. And so, that's where I think we have gaps on both the front end and people getting ready to go to treatment and then on the back end when they're coming out of treatment. And again, those folks, we ideally would like to make sure that they have those support services all the way around. We wanna make sure that they've got a job, that they've got food, that they've got housing, they've got, you know, a resume builder, somebody from the post-overdose response team to come check on them if they need to.
Okay. I, I've said before, I'm, I'm more of a fan of education and it sounds to me like they're really tying your hands as far as early intervention has to go into certain round, round holes for round programs, as opposed to an education side. You know, we all have the ounce of, I, I use the analogy of when we were all growing up, nobody wore a seatbelt. Now, we won't get into our, our car without a seatbelt. But, you know, when, when we were growing up, we had smoking ramps on high school, you know, at high schools, you know? And now, you, you, you can't go 30, you know, 300 yards from a high school and, and do that. But, I mean, this is not a short-term fix. This is a generational, educational problem in my, in my, in my estimation.
Correct. And I think that's one of the reasons why we have this recommendation to do $800,000 in utilizing these first two payment options, because it has a line item in there. We would request that we fund some early intervention programs, but if, if we're looking to do a strategy that says every Cumberland County student is going to get XYZ program and we wanna fund a program to do that, you're correct. That is an option B strategy. That does not, that, that's an option B strategy. Early intervention might look like we're gonna help kids do, all of our Cumberland County students do mental health first aid and we're gonna do an intervention program that way. If we're looking for sort of drug resistance and prevention programming, that's option B, which we can do, but we need to, and we can do that in, with future payments or, but we need to finish out that option B strategy, those option B requirements first to do it.
My final thing is Narcan. And Narcan to whom? You know, is it to, to the addict? Is it to the response team? I mean, we have response teams all over the county with the volunteer fire departments. Some are much more active than others, but they, they are a response team of sorts too, as, as they go through. So, when we say Narcan, who is, who is your idea of who's gonna be getting the Narcan?
Yes. Okay. So, the public as a whole, but also targeting some key stakeholders like the fire departments. We're working on a project right now to do a Narcan vending machine with the sheriff's office, making sure that our post-overdose response teams has, has Narcan. So, this will, and then of course, we offer it at the health department every day of the week. So, and then we also, when we provide Narcan, we take it out into the community. So, we're, when we're at a health fair, we hand it out to citizens. But, so making sure that each part of the strategy has Narcan available. So, if we fund $70,000, that's essentially doubles the amount of Narcan that we can purchase and we can do that through the health department and we can do it at public health pricing, which makes it a little bit cheaper for us. And then, we distribute that out to community partners for distribution to the public.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm gonna piggyback on what Commissioner Keith was talking about, about the housing. And you, and you spoke about the Oxford Housing as being a place of somewhat treatment. And the reason I say it like that, oh, where someone can go.
Not, they, there's some requirement for that place, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm a former member.
Yes, yes.
And so, but the one thing that we're looking at is, and, and is looking at an intense-type treatment facility where a person can stay a period of time, not just 30 days, if they need to stay longer or before they transition to the Oxford House. Because getting to the Oxford House, you need, you already have clean time. You should have some clean time when you get there. You don't go there trying to get clean time.
Right, correct.
And so, is there any other facility that we have other than, and I know they're sitting here, but like the Myrover Reese Fellowship, do we have another facility here in town that would do that type of intense treatment for individuals, like make sure they get to AMs, NAMs and things of that nature? Do we have that here other than?
We have some, some other treatment providers that are in Cumberland County and is the question about the housing part or the connected to services?
The, the question is, okay, if we're gonna help with treatment, we're gonna help with treatment.
Right.
Okay. So, that would be inclusive of everything, the housing and, and whatever else go into, providing the services to those that need it for opioid or for any other substances that they may be addicted to. So, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying that, yes, we, we might have a, a house here that houses addicts and, and alcoholics and whatnot and let them live there for a period of time, but to get to the root of the problem, we're gonna need something like an example of Myrover Reese. And I'm, and I, and trust me, I, I've not pushed it though, but they, but that's what we need here in Cumberland County. And do we have someone else other than Myrover Reese?
I'd say, yes, we do. We have other treatment providers, Carolina Treatment Center, and I feel like I'm gonna get myself in trouble if I start naming a particular provider. But we do, and we do have treatment providers and so, that's why under the recommendation one is to take $800,000 of that, that spring and, spring and 22 and summer 22 payment and do an RFP process so that requires us to fund early intervention, evidence-based addiction treatment, wraparound services, which I'm calling treatment and recovery, like housing, housing, support services and criminal justice diversion programs and that we have, fund at least one project in every area. And then, those projects should collaborate with each other, right? So, we could create a continuum of care, so that we're not just saying, we're gonna put money in MAT and that person's not connected with housing and treatment. So, these agencies should be required, and I recommend that these agencies should be required to talk to each other and refer, make referrals and coordinate at the agency level to implement those strategies.
Well, and the reason why I'm asking so deeply about this is because I do know that there are houses that are set up that call themselves recovery houses that are not recovery houses.
Right.
And the individual go in and out like a swinging door, just for somewhere to stay. And, and according to what you're presenting to us here on the slides is, the community is greatly concerned about people being in recovery and so, we need to enlist and find those individuals, those facilities that are gonna give the ultimate care to those individuals that are suffering through the disease of addiction.
Right. We, we want agencies that will be able to do that. And so, one of the requirements, and I wanna make sure I'm my, my language right, is that if they're gonna do the treatment component, it must be one of the treatment options that's consistent with the American Society of Addiction Medicine. And so, that includes MAT or medication-assisted treatment. So, that includes, it has to be for, and that, that's not a Jennifer Green recommendation, that's in the MO, MOA, that it has to be for methadone or buprenorphine or natrexone or naloxone. So, it has to be for one of those treatment options. It can't be a different treatment option. So, the, the part about the support services and the housing and, and other support services like employment can be tacked on to that as well. So, for example, one entity might provide all of those things and what we would recommend in the RFP process is to fund that agency if they do, you know, are the, the successful person in that project.
Okay. Let me ask you this, I promise I'll be finished. When we talked about this earlier on, we talked about other substances as well.
Yep.
And when we seek out facilities that would help individuals in recovery, would that be inclusive of other substances as well as, besides just opioid addiction?
Yes. We, well, we asked this question and the answer to that is, in a source, no, because the funding is specifically for opioids. So, if they fund other types of, address treatment for other types of disorders like alcohol use, then this portion of the funds can't be used for that. So, it has to be for opioids only. Now, for example, if you, one, one of the young ladies this evening mentioned that lots of co-occurring conditions. So, if you have opioid use disorder and you are, also have an alcohol addiction and you are getting job placement assistance, right? We're not parsing out, well, 50% and 50% and I can only pay for 50% of your job placement assistance, right? Or your 50% of your housing. So, for people that have co-occurring. But if we're only addressing alcohol use, then that is not covered. It has to be specifically for opioids unless it's some sort of co-occurring.
Okay. But it could be a combination.
It could, if you have more, if you, at least has to be addressing the opioid use if you are, but it will not pay for treatment for alcohol use, that, that's not an allowable expenditure. Yeah.
Commissioner Booth.
Thank you, sir. It's kinda like the academy board, you can't name all the ones, 'cause you'll leave off your director, your coach.
Yeah. I know.
I understand. But have you, were, was Myrover Reese one of the participants in the, you know, the community thing?
Yes.
And have you checked out their, their program that's been around probably longer than you've been alive? I think it's in the 60s.
61 years.
61 years.
They'd have to do the RFP process.
I was barely older than that.
They'd have to do the RFP.
Yeah. So, that's one of our recommendations, is because we know there's more than one treatment option, that we wanna make sure that we, and lots of people have approached us and said, well, we would like funding for this amount of funding for this and can you give us funding for this? And so, that's why our recommendation was to do the request for proposals process and then again, to make sure that the requirements of the RFP are met in terms of the type of treatment that are offered. If people, I'm gonna read here, if you don't mind, from the RFP, that if there are other types of treatment that are covered or offered by a facility, that is okay and that's a good thing, but the proportion, the portion of the funding can only go towards treating medication-assisted treatment or other things that are approved by the American Society of Addiction Medicine.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I guess I would ask this question. I saw, if you look at the cities and, and I know that some people were embedded into the committee from the city, if you did theirs over the 18, I meant, the 18 years, it comes out to like $111,000, which is basically just enough to probably get yourself in trouble or whatever. Have we reached out to the city manager or to Dr. Green? One of the things I think in terms of reading all of this is trying to be collaborative in these efforts. It would just be as easy for that funding of 111 to be maxed with ours to be able to give greater funding to the whole community. So, I don't know if either one of us or whether this board needs to recommend that or at least ask that, we send that over.
They have participated in some of our early meetings. We have not been back to a city council meeting. We wanted to come to this body first to make our recommendations, but, and so, we have not had that conversation with them about doing that.
And I guess the, the other question I'd ask is that, these recommendations and, and I saw them.
Sorry.
Are they etched in stone that this is, we can't change them or we can tweak them? There, the reason I ask is there are two other settlements that have already been done and so, that money's gonna come down. And so, if one of the things is talking about this residential and this treatment, we use all this money upfront, if we could've put it with the other two, whatever we get out of the other two, we may be able to do something even bigger or better for this community. So, as we do this, I know this has to go in by tomorrow, so we gotta sign it today, but there, can we change it or tweak it or whatever?
So, we only have the recommendation now for the spring 22 and the summer 22 payments.
Right.
So, any future decisions about the allocations of money can be, they are not subject to these recommendations. So, if you...
So, these are done. When we do this tonight, you're telling me this is it for this?
For those two payments. But let me go back to the very beginning. We left money over, so let me go back actually.
Yeah, I saw that.
So, we left money over, right? We intentionally did that, because the, we only totaled the first couple of, the first spring and 22 payments, it totals 1.8 million dollars. We left over almost, not quite a million dollars, because we knew that there were other strategies out there that we might want flexibility on funding. And frankly, if you're gonna fund, if we're gonna build something, it's gonna take a lot more money than one spring payment or one summer 22 payment. And so, that's why we intentionally left some money over, so that there would be flexibility. And then, that's also the reason why we left the recommendation, number one, pretty flexible for $800,000, so that if you wanted to change the amount that you, let's say we had some great projects and those projects totaled a million dollars, we could go back and change that. But we wanted to make sure there's at least a little bit of money in every pot, so that we could have a more robust and comprehensive program and then future payments could be used towards a larger strategy. And again, I'll note that if we did, if we, we wanna explore option four, 'cause we heard a lot of great recommendations about, we should buy this hotel and we should, we can build transitional housing or we could build this recovery center. All of that requires additional funding and leveraging of funding, because those are not, those capital expenditures are not allowable under the MOU. The only capital expenditure that is explicitly allowable is for a residential substance abuse facility specifically for those evidence-based strategies.
Based upon that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the recommendations from, that were presented.
Sub move. Oh, there's a question. Are we deciding on option A or B tonight?
So, that is part of, yes. So, that is the first recommendation, is to do option A for, to utilize that for strategy six, two, three, four and five and 12 and 10. That's the RFP process, so that's option A. And then, option two is also under option A, that's strategy seven and nine. And then, option three is also a option A strategy, that's strategy 11. That does not mean that you can't take the leftover dollars and do option B or that you can take additional payments in future years to do option B as well. We just need to finish out the process. We've, we've done most of it, but we just haven't had the opportunity to finish out the complete process for option B.
And I guess on option B, you'd have to have a lot more detail on the evidence base, as opposed to just doing it.
Correct. Yeah. That, that's correct. So, you have to, I'm, I'm trying to think of an example. You have, let me go back to... You have, let me go back to the, the strategies there. So if we were going to select doing a program implemented in schools, or to do, we've heard about provider training for prescribing, we'd have to give more detail about how we're gonna be able to, how we're gonna do that strategy.
And that's why the million dollars was left on the table to be able to possibly do that.
Right. And so you could, we didn't use all of the, the funding, and they, and you can select option B. So the idea with option A is to get some money out the door now, and then be able to consider these other strategies at a different time.
Commissioner Keith.
Yeah. So this, as many of you know, I've been involved in this for a long time. The, option B does give us more flexibility to have programs. My problem is option A, it kind of locks you into programs, even though you're putting some money aside, it's majority of the money is already talking for, and I'm, huh?
Not the majority.
Well, a majority of only what you get every year.
No, she left a million on the table, right?
Yeah, so it totals, let me go back to, it totals eight hundred thousand dollars, totals a little more than a million dollars. And then that, the, that depends on how much money you would like to allocate towards the strategy seven and nine. So eight hundred thousand dollars of the one point seven million would be for, out of the spring and twenty-two payments, would be for the RFP process, plus up to seventy thousand dollars, so that's not quite, not quite to a million yet, and then two hundred thousand dollars, so about a million for MAT. So putting all those things, those three recommendations together is a little more than a million dollars.
Right.
And that leaves about seven hundred and thou, seven hundred thousand dollars remaining for, out of these first two payments, and then, of course, then we'll have the additional payments for the remainder of the years.
And to your point, Dr. Green, that's not near enough to really knock a hole in, in this. You, we couldn't give you enough money to make a real impact in opioid abuse in North Carolina.
Oh, right, right. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no doubt. But I, I think we're just following paths of, of, of treatment and plans that, that don't have a measurement of success. And, you know, I, I just, I see an advantage to be, and the fact that we don't have it ready now. I mean, I, I feel like we're, we're backed into a corner, or we have to do it. But we, I, education to me is paramount, and there's just not enough, there's not enough flexibility for us in, in that. So, I, I, I guess there's a motion on the table, I don't know if it's to follow option A or to follow option B, but I'm more of a fan of B.
I think it was to follow the, the three recommendations.
And the, and what we do need, I believe, in the, for recommendation two is a dollar amount to, to recommend. So whether that's ten thousand dollars or seventy thousand dollars, and, and then to your point, Commissioner Keith, we can finish out that process and still do option B strategies. Those are still opportunities for us to be able to do. And I, under this recommendation number one, that early intervention strategy, still is not quite what I think you're thinking about.
It's not. It's schools.
It, it, it's schools. But, but we've been, so it's not quite that, but there is some early intervention things there that we can do with schools, like youth mental first, health first aid. It's not, it's not doing a drug resistance program in schools for every kid in Cumberland County. That's not-
I'm sorry, Jennifer, I thought you said early intervention has to have shown some presence of drug use.
So the way that it's worded in the strategy is it includes, it's for youth who may be struggling with problematic drugs or mental health conditions.
Right, right.
So, and I, and I would argue-
I'm kinda going on the prevention line, not the people that-
Well, I would arg, I would argue, though, that there, and Noah is here from NCACC that can kind of help me here, that for people that have, that the strategies that you would implement, for example, mental first, youth mental first aid, which also touches on that mental health component that we're working on, will have an impact on others who are not currently using drugs. So that even if we are addressing, for example, youth mental health first aid, or peer-based programs, that there is an option there to, that does have an impact on students that are not yet using drugs.
Uh, Madam Manager, and I guess I would ask this, because she asked a question, if you go to the next.
Oh, sorry.
And I ask both of you. So NRCAM, we did some out of our ARP?
We, we have done that, the sub award that has not been released yet.
But it was, how much was that?
Seventy thousand, I think.
Okay. And, and Dr. Green, you all have done NRCAM through the Health Department?
Yes, and we cobbled money together for that.
So, how much?
One forty-six.
So we, the, the commissioners did some money to Alliance, and we, and we purchased that, and then we get some from the state as well.
I'm just trying to figure out, you can send up Vicki and tell me, you don't have to mouth.
I'm dyslexic.
Because I can't read all of that. Okay.
It's one forty-six?
Okay. I was just trying to put it on the table so everybody knew that some of that has already been funded when you do this ten to seventy, so.
Well, well, I think you have to do an additional seventy thousand dollars.
No, no, I-
So I don't think you can use the seventy thousand dollars.
No, no, uh-uh. I understand that. I'm just wanting, everybody to know how much is already on the-
Oh, okay, yes, okay. I'm sorry, yes.
Has nothing to do with your program.
Okay, okay.
I'm just trying to figure out, you know, as we go, and you wanna determine how much money to put, if you're talking about using some stuff maybe for B or whatever, you may not have to do as much, well, it's always, you can always use NRCAM.
So you need a number for there?
Right.
Yes, and that, that is the amount of money that vital strategies will match. So if you say seventy thousand dollars, they will give us an additional seventy thousand dollars for three years. And then you commit to doing seventy-five percent of that. So-
So, I mean, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with doing, so you do recommendation one, the motion will be recommendation one, recommendation two of seventy thousand, because you gotta have that amount.
Yes.
And then recommendation three. Was that the motion?
So we recommend seventy thousand dollars?
Yes.
Chairman Adams.
For recommendation two.
Was that, I heard something.
Could I clarify the motion, please?
The motion is to do recommendation one, recommendation two in the amount of seventy thousand dollars, and then recommendation three, approve those. And Commissioner Stewart made that motion.
Thank you.
And I got a second from Commissioner Evans, or Commissioner Boos, I don't know which one you all did. Commissioner Evans. All right. So all of those in favor?
Voting in.
You gotta do about a mo.
That is unanimous.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
All right, thank the commissioners.
And that was a, a, a whole lot of work. So, thank you so very much, thank you. And at some point, there were a lot of people on that committee, and I'm not gonna ask you to name them tonight, but-
Get me in trouble.
I know, I will. Not the ones who came to the listening session, but actually that were on the committee that you had. And just let them know that this board appreciates, that was a lot of work, going to all of those different places to be able to talk to all of those different people. And they volunteered, or were told, voluntold to be able to do that, and that's what says this county, I think, aside from a lot of other people, that they're willing to give up that time, because it was in the day, at night, wherever it was, and they went to have those, those hearings. And clearly, to all of our citizens who participated in that, in the survey, we wanna thank them, because without them, we couldn't get to where we got to tonight. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to the consideration of the ARP committee, business application funding recommendations. This was Commissioner Keith, he chaired this committee. I think Madam Manager, you're gonna let Ty, and we're gonna introduce Noah, I guess, to everybody.
Yes, this is Ty Vault, Chief of Staff. I'm gonna let him introduce Noah.
Chief of Staff, Mr. Chief of Staff. Good evening, commissioners. I thought I was gonna be the first one to invoke Noah's name this evening, but, so, we have with us- No, yes, sir. So we have Noah Johnson with us. He's, he is a strategic project coordinator from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and he is here helping us with our ARP program as well as our opioid settlement dollars. So he's assisting both management and the Health Department. We're happy to have him helping us.
Thank you, Mr. Noah.
So commissioners, what I have for you tonight is recommendations for funding for small business applications, as the chair mentioned. This item was discussed in the ARP committee, meeting on August fifth, and that committee approved these recommendations to be moved forward, forwarded to this meeting. We have twenty-nine businesses that have completed steps one through four of the process, and that they total one, one point, almost one point one million dollars in funding, to be specific, one million thirty-one thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars in funding. And we are requesting that these businesses be approved for funding. If you have any specific questions about any of them, I'd be happy to, to answer those questions.
And Mr. Vault?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Counsel.
It was just interesting, as you sent us information periodically, you were sending us information. And I thought, when are they gonna have time to do all that one? I looked at all those steps and everything that they were, and I was just impressed, I really was.
Yes, but we appreciate, it's been, it's been, it's been a process with the changing rules and the interim, the interim final rule, and then the final rule, and then guidelines changing. But we've, we've adjusted, and we've, and it's taken longer than we would've liked, but, but, but we are, we're moving forward.
Well, they didn't know what they were doing at first. I mean, come on, man.
You talking about the committee? Oh, wait a minute, oh. I know, the federal government. And, and we've got this recommendation tonight, but as everyone knows, that we've already approved some prior funding for small businesses. So this is the second round of those who've met, one through four, and they're still ongoing with the small business-
Yes, sir.
So I would take a motion to approve the ARC committee's recommendation to the board. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second. All of those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That will take us to the consideration of correcting the minutes of the meetings of December sixteen, two thousand and two.
Sub move, Ms. Mayor.
Two thousand and two.
Sub move, Ms. Mayor.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All of those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right.
I wasn't here that-
All, all of those in favor, no, he's not unanimous. All of those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All of those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster, Counsel, Stewart, Chairman Adams, Commissioner Evans, and Commissioner Keith, voting in opposition, Commissioner-
Yeah, but to, Mr. Chair, it, there was a date that was a Sunday instead of a Monday, and, and basically, that's what it was.
Yeah, I'll read that, I'll read that.
It was also to include the descriptions.
Do include the descriptions in there, but it was the wrong date.
Yeah. All right. I will call on the appointments, I'll call on Vice Chairwoman Stewart for the appointments. The first, first one is supportive adjustments.
I would like to make a motion to appoint the following nominees, Gary Silverman and Ian Reeves as alternative member.
If I can get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All of those in favor?
Unanimous.
That would take us to the Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy.
The Library Board of Trustees, I would like to make a motion to appoint Daniel Matoya to serve in unexpect, unexpired term.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second. All of those in favor?
Unanimous.
That takes us to the ABC Board. There are two vacancies and I think four nominees. Madam Vice Chairwoman Stewart.
There are four nominees for two vacancies. The, I would have a motion to appoint either Terry Thomas, Greg Edge, Jamel George, Alex Warner.
So all of those in favor of Terry Thomas?
Voting in favor of Terry Thomas, Commissioners Counsel, Stewart, Chairman Adams, Commissioner Evans, that's four.
All those in favor of Greg, Greg Edge?
Voting in favor of Greg Edge, Commissioners Lancaster, Boos, and Keith, that's three.
Jamel George?
Voting in favor of Jamel George, Commissioners Counsel, Stewart, Chairman Adams, and Commissioner Evans, four.
And Alex Warner.
Voting in favor of Alex Warner, Commissioners Lancaster, Commissioner Boos, and Commissioner Keith, that's three. So Terry Thomas has four votes, Jamel George has four votes.
Those would be the appointees. That would take us to the Mid-Carolina Aging Council.
The Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council has one vacancy, and I would like to make a motion to appoint the following nominee, Pat Edwards, in the volunteer category.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Voting in favor. Please raise your hands if you're voting in favor.
My hand is tied.
Are you voting in favor, Commissioner Counsel, Commissioner Stewart, Chairman Adams, Commissioner Evans, voting in opposition, Commissioners Lancaster, Commissioners Boos, and Commissioners Keith? The motion passes.
And the Social Services Board?
The Social Services Board has one vacancy, and I would like to make a motion to appoint the following nominee, Betsy Bradshaw.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All of those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster, Commissioner Counsel, Commissioner Stewart, Chairman Adams, Commissioner Evans, voting in opposition, Commissioners Boos, and Commissioner Keith.
With that, we will recess the Board of Commissioners meeting, and we will convene the North Cross Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting. And with that, we do the North Cross Water and Sewer District Items of Business, which is consideration of the partial certification, which we did in the Board of Commissioners meeting, but we have to do it in the North, North Cross Water and Sewer District. If I can get a motion?
Sub move.
It's been moved in second. All of those in favor?
That is unanimous.
I will adjourn the North Cross Water and Sewer District Governing Board and reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting. Then I will recess the Board of Commissioners meeting to Conference Room five sixty-four for the closed session.